You saying how you?
Good, good, good.
Doing good, doing good.
We got everybody with us. We'll start the January 12th, 2021 work session. Going over the regular agenda, there's going to be a number of things that we're going to add from that standpoint. So we have consent agenda, which would be the approval of the December 22nd regular session, work session, and then the executive session where we have discussions about the city's finance officer. Any objections to any of those? Ms. Dorf?
No objections.
Ms. Qua?
No.
Ms. Knight?
No objections.
Ms. Tran?
No, John.
Meeting agenda, things that we would add would be a D, E, and an F. So there'd be three items that would be added to new business. Item D would be relating to an associate judge. For those who remember Ethan Bam was appointed, the law firm, his law firm was appointed, and then he was appointed, and he's now become the main judge for the city of Morro. So he's going to resign from that position. The other member of his law firm, who's also an attorney, obviously, is his wife, and her name is Jenny Nguyen, and we would like to appoint her as the associate judge. Most people have come to her in the past, or she's been working on a lot of this.
In fact, she was at the Christmas party, Ethan.
So that's one item.
May I? Question. We're not getting any other candidates for that position?
It's the same law firm.
I know.
And they're just right there, right across.
And they're...
Well, I know who they are.
Yeah, right. And, you know, obviously, the council will have to vote, but the reason it, we want to make haste is because we have a judge who is getting, and he's not comfortable in the COVID courtroom, and we don't, we don't want to have a situation last year where we have, you know, multiple court sessions that are canceled without an associate judge in place. That's one of the reasons I asked the mayor to add it to, ask to add it to the agenda.
So do we look at...
Well, normally, we would pick a law firm, and then they'll send us either one.
I don't think, I mean, when we picked Ethan, we didn't have candidates. We just picked him.
Right.
Yeah, which you all, as a council, you had the authority.
He had served as Finch's ent...
As an attorney.
Yeah. So we had, you know, her duties were...
I mean, at least every time I did it.
She's been an attorney for a long time, hasn't she?
Oh, yeah, she's...
Had to serve.
But like I said, normally, we pick, like, a couple, like, even when you had Finch's law firm, you didn't get Steve Fincher much of the time, I would assume. Did you get somebody else occasionally, like, all the time?
Mostly.
Yeah. So in this case, we're not really changing law firms so much, plus they're also a city firm. We're kind of staying with what's there, and whatever he's done, she should know too, I would assume.
Well, and just remember, with any judge that's appointed, a municipal judge, you have to go through training, just like newly elected officials. So she'll have to participate in that as well. But, but to your, to your point, this is the only candidate that, that I have recommended. So the council will just have to decide if you can, want to approve her, if you want to see other candidates. Go on.
I think staying with, we, we need to at least look at some other resumes or something, just to keep it transparent. I mean, we're just going to pick, you know, are we going to pick from that law firm?
Yeah.
All the time? We have the...
I think she's the only one left. It's a small law firm, I think. I mean, I say actually...
At least the two of them.
And she got a...
Well, I'm familiar, I'm familiar with them both. I've known them for quite a while, but I just want to know the, is that the procedure that we're going to follow when it comes to appointing?
Well, the beauty of, with this saying, whether it's law or an accounting firm, it's really a popular area of justice. I mean, you can go out and appoint anybody you want, or the criteria, just about anything you want. So in this particular case, I'm just trying to stay with what we're arguing. I'm not changing anything, except identifying a different person. So, yeah.
So, and again, what the mayor's saying is, like, with the professional service, you don't have to have multiple candidates. So it's...
It's not.
Yeah, it's not, it's not good. It's just, you're just appointing somebody for this professional service.
And I would assume more people know her than me. I didn't pick Ethan. That was before my time. So if you're going to want to change a law firm as a municipal judge, if I don't have to, unless you're telling me that a reasonable should.
So when we appointed Ethan, was he, he didn't have the law firm here?
I just had one.
I just recommended it, and the council approved it, just like now.
So I, I want to know what, how, how did we get the affiliation, you know, with an associate, picking an associate judge with that law firm? How did, when did that become, you know, the law firm?
Well, so when, in the past, the judge may have chosen an associate judge on his own.
Right, yeah.
And with just somebody that's going to show up when he's not here. And so honestly, Ethan contacted me and said, would Morro consider appointing me as associate judge? So he met with Judge Bray, and Judge Bray said he was confident that Ethan would be an associate judge, a good associate judge. So I made the recommendation, and the council approved it.
So...
So it's the same thing.
He met with, she met with Judge Bray as well, or is he okay with that?
I can't say that, because he's not meeting with anybody right now. But, because he's, doesn't want to be exposed to more people than he has to.
That's what they do with life, right?
Yeah. Well, even him. So, but I just, I just want to make sure we're clear. This process we're doing tonight is exactly like we did before. It's nothing new. So if the council, the consensus approves her, then she would be the associate judge. We wouldn't have to see multiple candidates, because we've never done that before, and it's not required by law.
It's, it is a new procedure that's happening, because we've not had a, a law firm in the city that we selected from, or we are not doing business with that law firm, are we?
His, her law firm? Yeah, sure.
What are we doing?
Well, I mean, the city hasn't been business with the law firm.
I think it has to be. I mean, if he's...
Well, I mean, they could give us a business license and property taxes, but, I mean, we don't hire her as an attorney.
Well, in that case, but you chose it. But example is, when you, when you chose Fincher's law firm, if that was the case, then Fincher would have been the only one that would have been capital representation, not five of the people we brought in. So in this particular case, you technically picked a law firm, whatever you call it itself, I don't know.
No, I'm sorry. I thought that Councilwoman Dean was asking if we had done business with that firm in any other way.
Oh, no, just, just the judge?
Yeah.
But it's at least not down across the street? That's not bad.
Ethan already got Fincher coming in, you know?
Oh, it's the associate judge, yes.
Yeah.
He wasn't with...
And it kind of, like I said, it keeps it consistent, you know, unless you got, not even the, that particular firm, you know, should represent the city.
It's just that all of this is firsthand information, and just finding out now that, you know, we're shifting from one associate judge to another in the same law firm, that is something we've not done since I've been here. And I don't think in the last, well, from Fincher's firm, Fincher, when Fincher had...
Yeah, so, so, just so that we're clear, we've only ever once approved an associate judge, and it was Ethan. So it's, I want to not complicate it. I'm recommending Jenny Nguyen. She coincidentally serves in the same law firm, and, because it's his wife. It, it's not about the law firm as much as it is, I'm just recommending the associate judge, just like I did last time. So the council can either approve her or not approve her. And if you didn't approve her, then I would go and find someone else to recommend. If you do approve her, then that will be our associate judge.
Okay, so we did, can we get something on her, you know? All we know is her name.
No, we've got a bottom. We have to look.
I'm going to text him and ask him.
Any other comments on that, where she's found the information? Ms. Tran?
No, please.
Ms. Qua?
No.
Ms. Knight?
No questions.
Uh, E, renovations related to the Red House and Old Town Mall. I know that we've got another different company that they had. Tell us a little bit about what we did, and we kind of reached them, including?
Uh, we actually reached out and had a number of people go out and take a look at the Red House and analyze the costs associated with the exterior and some repairs to the interior of the Red House. The first contractor that we reached out to, their price came back extremely high. It was a hundred and fifteen thousand. And that's, again, to replace all the windows, repair the exterior shell of the building, of the, of the house itself, make repairs to the roof, doors, and then we go in and we take care of all the drywall and doors that are damaged on the inside also. The second estimate that I got, and we were going to get involved with paying for the windows, it was still extremely high. It was a little over fifty-two thousand eight hundred. And so we decided to continue to look to see if we could find a contractor that could come in and just one-stop shop, break it down into two categories, interior versus exterior. And we were very fortunate, very lucky that we found a qualified contractor with the skills and abilities that we're looking for to do the renovation. And the price came in extremely low, roughly around fifty thou, fifty thousand, just a little, little, little under fifty thousand dollars, right around that range. I've had an opportunity to go out and assess some of the work that the contractor has completed. The work is impeccable, and I think going forward, they could be a valued resource for us with regards to renovating the remainder of the properties that we have at that location. So by all means, I've provided some information to the mayor and actually had some good conversations with him, and I think he's...
Was he available?
A good job.
Absolutely.
I'm available to answer any questions in the line of...
Any questions related to the, what I'm going to call the, the repair on that red bill? Ms. Dorf?
Yes, and why are we repairing the house?
Remember, repair, at least put it back in some semblance of repair eventually to be able to lease it to the private sector, the restaurant. That's not us doing the restaurant. That's us, us repairing the damage that makes it at least presentable.
So we're spending the money to bring that particular house back up to code, to lease it? And will we, you want to sign for the other properties as well?
Greenhouse, probably. White House in the lower section, that makes sense. The other ones that are kind of vacant, we're never renovating on the inside, not yet. We're working on, we looked at the back porch on those shops. Yes. Turns out they're made out of some steel beams. There's some good things there. As we take those trees down in the back, that'll help, and then we'll have a better understanding of where we sit there. But, you know, basically, the city allows a place to be destroyed. We're going to have to do some basic maintenance on it to get it back in shape, and that's the cost of the block, and that block is our fault. So, you know, staring at it, it's not going to help. We got to move forward.
I understand.
We've met with a series of natural people since then.
Yes.
And there seems to be interest. And, you know, right now, it's a little bit harder to do when you walk into the mess we have.
Okay. Are we going to get a cost analysis of all the money that's being spent, and where it's coming from?
This will come out of two thousand and eight slots.
Okay, can we get a, you know, just be kept informed on what the cost is to do those repairs?
I think all of that's going to be part of the accounting. Anything that's spent on any of those funds, you did every single thing. Yeah. I know, so this one's a block.
I guess, I guess my, my, what I needed to is that I would like to make sure that we're not putting all of those funds in one place when we have other, other projects and things as well, that we've got money, if it can be utilized for other things. It seems like we're just gun-holed into getting all of this done, and let's look at some other things as well while we're doing this.
Which we are. You know, you have two thousand and eight slots, you have a two thousand and fourteen slots, you have a two thousand and twenty-one slots. You have a number of projects moving on all at the same time, whether it's a sidewalk project, whether it's a trail project, whether it's a garden project, whether it is getting some initial designs or layout on the dark space at the mall, which, you know, getting some concepts and layouts for the remaining section on Rouse Road. We have a hundred and forty-seven thousand that needs to be played out for the...
Trail connection under the...
Trail connection coming in off of West Woodway. And that's just the main, the ones that I remember off the top of my head.
Digital signs.
Yeah, we'll pull it, yeah, but all different. So, yes, but...
What was that?
A digital sign, you see that? Did you go by that? Did you go see the digital sign?
That's good.
But that was, we'll pull that up separately. That was a slot.
I just want to make sure that we're not putting all of the eggs in one basket.
I think you are.
Okay.
Any other questions related to the Red House? Ms. Knight?
I think I understand the concern and the direction that Councilwoman Dean is going and expressing. A blanket statement saying, yes, we're going to rehab Old Town Morro. Certainly, we can understand that, but then I know that there were conversations early on in the beginning of last year where there was this disdain, I guess I could say, disdain for things not being written or initial drawings being developed, or having a plan that can be reviewed by others and shared. So I feel like we're kind of in that same space with Old Town Morro. A blanket statement has been made, yes, we're going to rehab Old Town Morro, but it makes a better point for buy-in and understanding conceptually what the new goal will be, is if it's in writing so that we can review and understand and share, because right now it seems to be a lot of conversation with public works and directives provided. We're advised in the council meeting, but there's still not a bigger picture understanding of what is going to be developed, other than the blanket statement of we're going to rehab Old Town Morro. Well, rehabbing Old Town Morro with a new plan, we would like to understand and see all of the pieces tied in. And to your point, you're saying, well, there's a slot from this year, a slot from that year, and a slot from that year, understanding not all council members are following behind the finance department and, you know, making sure things are credited to the right line. So understanding in the general sense along with the design and the concept, where the money comes from, that will be helpful. That will be helpful for all of us to understand. This is the direction that we're going in. Rather than it seeming as though, which it seems as though right now, there's conversations with public works to get things done, but not all council has had the opportunity to understand what the big picture is, which maybe the big picture held in someone's mind, but we're just asking for it to be shared and expressed in a way that is clear.
I know we've had discussions, and if you're just looking at the phases, okay, first, visibility to I-75. We've been talking about that at least since I got here, and I believe we have a permit that hopefully allows us to leave it. I don't know that anybody's missing that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Then the next phase is, you know, we allow buildings to be destroyed. Your own property, for the most part. All right, it does us no good. You just want it to sit there. So that's simple. It's called windows and doors. You got a security department. We put some security cameras out there to be able to make it so that, you know, it's less likely that someone's going to tear it up. You're, all you're really doing is mowing the grass. You got your fountain out there running. You're getting some windows and doors, right? That's where you kind of stop. And that's, as we get better pricing for each one of those particular pieces. Now, you have had two functional restaurants that are, we've met with at least four potential tenants for these spaces. Each one has different ideas in terms of menu and sit-down process and different things. And I can't say that any one of them has pulled the trigger yet. And right now, it's a little difficult to do when you walk into those properties. It's, it's a little scary.
Yeah.
So clean up that part, and keep going with what we're doing. We'll get the trees down. And then we'll know, of the four, there wasn't any one of the four that didn't want the opportunity. It's just when you first started, that they got to look at and say, what would it cost for us to do our restaurant concept here? What would it cost to build that? So we don't have that to bring to you to say. And, you know, I don't think I'd be out of place to mention some of the people that we talked to, I don't think, but, you know, so we met, we met today with a group that's been in the city for a while, Fishers and Men. You know, that's, you know, kind of standard fare.
Well, aren't we, aren't we putting that cart before the horse here?
You, which horse would be talking about?
Do we have that agreement, easement and all of that stuff taken care of yet?
That's legal.
That's what?
That's supposed to call legal. You're legal, people are going to ask you X, and I'm pretty sure you're simply going to give it. I mean, you have a series of easements, and being as polite as I can possibly be, we're not asking. It's a legal process. We're going to go forward. We got to be able to access the property, period. We're just going to finish it. We'll follow that where it gets, but we will absolutely finish it.
Does that make sense? So, and you're saying with litigation, however long it takes?
It's not going to take long.
And, and it's not litigation. It is, it, it, it's a process that we have to go through, but the outcome is known.
Yeah, you absolutely know what you're going to do.
Right. And also, I'm thinking about the other partnership with the Marson and all of that. I mean, does all this work hand in hand in a sense that we, we're trying to kind of bridge something here so that we can, everybody can, you know, it'd be mutual?
The Marson Center is slightly different, right? That's where you have a...
The common area maintenance and all of that, that agreement is what I'm, yeah.
That's a, that's a separate piece.
Right.
We'll negotiate that as a county comes through, but I don't know if they're ready for that. I hope so. It'd be nice.
Yeah, and so that is less of a process and more of a negotiation.
Where you're just going in there and saying, you know, I need right-of-way for an expanded border. I need right-of-way for a sidewalk. You just go over and you survey it, which is what we're doing. You tell them how many square feet you need, and you pretty much go through the process. Now, if everybody agrees, it's fine. But all you're disagreeing to is potentially price, okay? And for anyone who's concerned as to what the price may be, you know, the county has the entire forty-acre tract valued at sixteen hundred dollars. Two separate sections, twenty seconds a piece, eight hundred and fifteen dollars on one side, eight hundred and fifteen dollars on the other side. It'll cost us more money to deal with attorneys and ability to solve the problem, right, which is part of the issue, than it probably will be for any type of damages. And if they decide it's worth it, we're going to have an appraisal to back it up, which I'm surprised. And all they're doing is basically telling you what they're, what they think their property's worth, and then all of their remaining property now gets taxed at that level. There's no incentive for them to do that. All they're going to do is pay us to take what we got, you know? So it's not complicated. It's just, there was an oversight for whatever reason years ago, and that has to be fixed. And then, I know there was a barbecue place. It was, I want to call it a taqueria, Hispanic restaurant of some sort. And then there's a, a known food truck. It's been out here for a while. So those are the, those are the four that I know personally. I'm not saying if you haven't had it with the council. But right now, visually, still not what we're going to do. Other questions? Ms. Tran? Call.
Out of that, this is related to the designated marketing organization, which does exist now on paper as a five-to-one C.
Yes.
And this is where we wanted our marketing here to, you know, approve of us under the terms that we want. And this right here is basically saying we would like to share a legal counsel. Well, because we had issues with the last one, and they don't want us fighting each other long before we even get into something. And this says, our city attorney can also be used by academic designated marketing organization, which I believe is the Marrow Convention and Business Association, but yeah, that form of approval to do that. It makes logical sense to use your own accounting abilities. It certainly makes logical sense to use your own city attorney. In the event one entity decided to fight with the other entity, which I can imagine at this point, then the entity, the city retains the city attorney, and it would, it would not happen. And there should be no reason for, probably need of approval to make it happen. Any issues with that?
Um...
Ms. Qua?
Some of the language we disagree on, where...
The attorney wrote it, so...
All the attorneys that there could possibly be conflicts. Um... So if there could possibly be conflicts going forward with, you know, something, you know, are we saying we're just going to put this agreement in place and, and if something happens, we'll have to deal with it at that particular time?
No?
May I?
No problem.
So basically, what it's saying is, because you are agreeing to jointly use your city attorney for the DMO, should a conflict arise, the city retains Smith and Welch, Levenwhite, the DMO would have to go get a different attorney, because one attorney can't represent both sides.
Right.
So we're not saying there ever will be a conflict, but she's making sure we understand that should a conflict ever arise, she's the city's attorney, the DMO will have to get a third-party attorney.
Okay, so from previous meeting, the board of, of the DMO, the recommendations for the, for the board, a chairman and an executive director.
It's a total five, okay.
And one, the director, a staff member of the city?
Um, your, your director is a staff member of the city.
Right, that's going to be on that board, and the chairperson will be...
That's correct.
You.
But you still would have three additional people that would make the vote that could control, you know, something. Not, not different than the, than the agenda.
But they're not staff, and they're not mayor.
Your, your, your director is just...
They're not serving on the DMO in their capacity as executive economic developer and mayor. It's as if they are serving as Baal Deng, who is, will be the executive director of the DMO, but not because, not, not because he's the economic developer. So the mayor will be the chairman, but not because he's the mayor.
So you're saying that this agreement is saying that even though that this is the case, in the event that there is a lawsuit, that the city will not be held liable for anything that the chairman and the board of directors had something to do with?
Okay, I think you're definitely reading something to that one.
Yeah, I don't know that that's...
Well, it has nothing to do with that. Similar to the DGA.
The chairman and the board and the executive director will be making decisions as well. Is that correct?
They can, but the bottom line is that entity by itself has its own issues. In other words, that entity stays in that entity. It doesn't cross over to the other side.
Okay, I think that...
No difference than any act that you would take on a development tour with your board, right? You can say you're here, and you're there, but if you're taking actions as that group, then the entity holds its own, right? It has a right to hold property. It has a right to see what they see. That's all written into your joint, under your, your files. Just by simply holding it tightly, doesn't mean anything, right? No different than you... Uh, no different than you being held personally responsible for the decision. The order of thing is you're making the decision, you're making the decision as a council member, if you don't like that. Now, if you cross over the boundary, you could possibly be held personally liable for something, but you, that's not the same thing. Two different groups. And this one, as you mentioned, this, this one is more about just being able to share a city attorney. The more attorneys you get in rent, the more complicated it gets, and the more money you lose. We don't have that much money. We have to use the money we do have as wisely as we can. And in this particular case, the idea is to partner with your business community, to be able to promote your business community, with the theory being, the better they do, the more money we make. The more money we make as a city, the better we can pay our employees doing different things every day.
Well, this is, this is something new for me, it's a different scenario. I wanna make sure that we're not taking shortcuts when we need to, you know, sometimes, as you said, you know, that... A comment about me being a nickel slot player, let's not be a nickel slot player here.
Well, we're not. We spent almost a year putting this together.
Okay.
We did it through, I don't know how many hours of legal work, this is pretty slow.
Okay, well, that's, that's all I'm saying.
And we, a year's a long time, you know? I, I, you know, whether you want to move after or not, this is about a year, we spent a long time trying to get it right. And I believe through legal counsel, we've advanced to do so. Now, we're taking the next step. And before we can have people on the other side having debate with, we can put a name in place. We're saying, us, City of Ma, we're happy with the results, and don't be, we'd be debating that as ourselves. I hope so. You know, that's why we took so much time to get it right the first time, so we don't have the issues that happened in the past, um, with a different board, with a different entity. Other questions? Ms. Knight?
No questions.
Ms. Tran?
No question, Mr. Smalls.
Mr. Quelch, okay. And, and the one, this is kind of important, where, um, the, the way the DMO was set up in its initial meeting, there was like a player on one, and that has to be the chairman, in this particular case, that would be me. The reason that I don't sign off on that particular one is I can't have legal signatures, you know? Because me and me, it's gonna work. So, you'll have, um, Mayor Portem signing up for the city, and you'll have me signing up in behalf of the DMO. And that's recommendation, that's legal counsel. Does that make sense? Now, remember, there's no such thing as me in this entity, it's a city. I've been signing up behalf of the city. If I cannot make a decision or excuse myself, it defaults to Mayor Portem. Mayor Portem, as we said right now, is being trained, so she can sign that document in behalf of the city. Okay. New business, um, approval, authorization to execute residential lease agreement for fifty-eight, fifty-four Jones Road. I believe that's the corner piece property that we got up around the university. Do you have some details on that?
In terms of, she's ready to move in when y'all execute the lease?
Yes. How much money are we gonna get with the terms?
Go ahead, Joe.
What were the questions?
The, how much?
I'm sure it's in your...
The lease itself is one thousand one hundred dollars.
One hundred.
Oh, that's nice. And what was the term on the contract?
It's a year, year lease.
It's just a year. The one, you're just like the, the Lake Harbor now. Uh, we did, I did have a question about the maintenance of the yard, you know, just like with the other one. We say we're gonna do, you know, minimal, basic maintenance and landscaping, and there was some question as to whether or not we wanted to do that on this property, and so, that would be for the council to decide.
We've already got the equipment up there to maintain the other property outside of that.
Yes, sir.
Well, isn't that yard enclosed? Is it fenced there?
It is fenced, and portions of it is, but...
Which is mostly wooded.
It's mostly wooded area, we have some trees that, uh...
But if they wanted to put a lock on a gate or something like that, I mean, with that, could they do that and say, you know? If they're renting it, couldn't they lock the fence?
Yeah, but if you're, if you're renting it, more than landlord, we got rent access, um, we should rent that one.
It depends.
I don't match colors, too. I haven't been able to get down that specific.
I'm just saying.
We're, we're right there, we're already maintaining, we're actually getting it good. We know this isn't gonna be long-term. I, I think we, we basically got it renovated for what, under ten thousand dollars?
Yes, sir. Um, and, and basically it has a, has a, the restrooms, the one restroom in the facility, or building, has been, our home has been completely renovated. Tub, sinks, and the whole nine. And then the kitchen, uh, we put in appliances, the appliances that were there were dated pretty bad and weren't working. And then, lastly, we put a sink in, so we did a pretty good job getting it prepped up and ready. And we had a number of people chomping at bit that reached out to us the minute we put a sign in the front yard. It said, hey, we wanna rent that space immediately. And then, I have had conversations with the potential person who wants to lease the space. Made it clear that there's a strong possibility we would maintain the property, which means I need to get the access onto the property.
In fact, I think it's, it's, you wrote it into the lease, instead of the bottom of the page.
I wrote it into the lease, uh, so all of that's...
Not about access, but...
But I think we're, we're making a good decision to go...
Doesn't public works have enough to do already without having to... I mean, offers purposes like that, I mean, really?
They won't take it that long.
They got... It's just one of the, this, we, we've been maintaining it since, since we've had the property, so...
And, and my goal, obviously, is to, to get some really cool development there. But we got some other properties renovation to it that'll probably go before that one. We, we would easily take a year, even if, if we had something in that, Popeyes just had a street, did the same thing. By the, by the time you lay it out, do the design, do the different things, we're gonna be here, you know, a year before somebody's gonna even think about turn some dirt. And that's assuming that they started today, which we don't seem to have. So, you know, you're gonna be looking at that property that way for at least a couple of years, I guess, um, that would be the other. So, so that's on that one. Any other questions?
I'm just putting that for our guys, you know, they, they, they work hard and, and Lord, Lord, don't, don't suggest any more.
Any, any other questions? Ms. Knight?
No questions at this hour, right?
Ms. Tran? Ms. Tran? Man, questions? She's... Mr. Quelch? All right, uh, C, um, uh, approval, um, an agreement between Clayton State University Health Services and City of Ma to receive state-owned storage of the nineteen vaccine to authorize registration consent form and to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement under a legal... This, this is super cool.
So, um, we will ask that your motion says that, um, there's, there's a detail that we're working out between Clayton State and our attorney about the responsibility and the storage of, because this actually addresses before we get our freezer, you know, that they, we may get vaccines from them that they're storing.
Tell me a little bit more about what we're trying to do.
So, um...
The frizzy things.
Would you like, man, would you, go ahead, go ahead. I don't wanna steal your limelight, this is good stuff. This is good stuff.
Go over, so we don't have to turn our necks.
He's coming.
So, back in December, uh, the council agreed to entering into an agreement with the state DPH to allow us to give vaccinations and under what was called a closed pod scenario. And that meant that we could vaccinate our own employees, and that was it. Well, as y'all have seen in the news, there's more demand than there is vaccination sites. So, they told us and other entities that applied for the closed pod, you're now an open pod. You can get the vaccine to, to public now, okay? So, that's what we're working towards. We've ordered a freezer, because the vaccination we, we're gonna get is the Moderna, which, anybody knows, that's the second one to come out, the Pfizer was the first, this is the second. The storage and handling on the Moderna is much easier than the Pfizer because of the temperature. Pfizer requires, I think, minus seventy Celsius storage, this is like minus twenty. So, it's much easier to handle.
Like an ice cream, bro.
Right. So, we've, we've ordered pharmaceutical freezer, it's, it's supposed to be here next week, but we don't know for certain what day. So, we'd like to go ahead and order the vaccines, but if they come before we have the freezer, we gotta have a place to put them. That's the whole premise behind the MOU with Clayton State. They have a Pfizer freezer, they have a Moderna freezer. And so, we're gonna partner with them, it's the Clayton State Health Services, which takes care of the students on the campus. And so, uh, Chief Moss has been and spoken with their director, everything's good, we just gotta work out a little bit of verbiage on the MOU. So, we may not even need to utilize the MOU. Hopefully, our freezer will be here when we get our vaccinations, and this whole thing will just be...
A wash.
A wash.
Well, it's a good backup.
But it's just in case. Right. Worst thing we can do is get them in and not have a place to put them.
Yeah, 'cause then we won't be getting anymore.
Yeah, we won't get anymore. It's a black question, that's it.
Is the county gonna do students?
They're gonna do students and staff. But I think they're gonna remain a closed pod, is my understanding. So, right now, in the county, there's only two places giving the vaccines that I'm familiar with, and that's Department of Health, Forest Parkway, and Battle Creek. So, I don't know if any more will pop up before we get ours, but, uh, we could potentially be the third location to give the vaccines at the county.
And in terms of the priority at this point, is it sixty-five an hour, is that what I'm...
Yes.
And their caregivers?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, and their caregivers?
Right, and, uh, firefighters, EMS, healthcare workers, and law enforcement has been added to that now.
So, is that considered the tier one?
It's tier one A plus.
A plus.
They tweaked it, made it one A plus.
Okay.
So, the next one will be the tier, uh, one B, um, which would be essential workers, I believe. And then after that, it would be open to everybody. This is moving fast, it's changing every day.
Right, right.
The governor's frustrated that not, we don't have enough vaccines out there to give, not enough places to administer them, so we're, we're trying to get on board as soon as we can.
Excellent. And we're trying to do the same thing on the testing. We got ahead of the curve, we did pretty well, you know, re-credit testing every time. But this, a little more permanent solution, um, and then just asking kind of a porn word question. We know some people, for whatever reason, have an allergic reaction, um, I know most people talk about that. What, what's your, what's your strategy, what's your...
It's very, very rare to have an allergic reaction. You have a reaction a lot of times in twenty-four to forty-eight hours. I had the Pfizer shot, and I felt fine that day, the next day, my arm felt like somebody punched me, just felt bruised. And after that, I had no other reaction, and that's typical. Uh, that's the typical response. And if someone has a headache or fever or whatever, that doesn't mean that it's not working or... That means the antibodies are building in your body, is the way I understand it. That's, that's not necessarily a bad thing to have that reaction. An allergic reaction would be hives, swelling of the throat, you know, something that you get from a bee sting or something like that. That would be a severe allergic reaction.
But you have to have enough confidence to totally shut it down.
Oh, yes.
You take it, I think I can do it, but I'm not sixty-five yet, so y'all can do it, I think.
Well, we didn't need to hear that. If someone does have an allergic reaction, um, I know that they're, they're keeping people for like fifteen minutes. Would it, would that be within that fifteen minutes, or perhaps if they go, you know, something like that, uh, kind of like...
It can take up to four hours to have that reaction, but most of it will be within fifteen to thirty minutes.
Okay.
So, uh, are we gonna serve our, um, city season only, that whole Clayton County, or do they need money?
I don't know that we can limit it to our city. I know one of the questions when you sign up on the county website is, do you live in Clayton County? But that's not a disqualifier. And I think we have to offer it to whoever signs up.
That's fair.
And we're working on the signup process now, uh, to make sure we have it in all the languages and everything like that, so...
Once, once we publish it, I think it'll have a lot of...
Well, I do wanna say, like, I know that, uh, Chief Moss has been working on this for months and months and months. And, you know, we communicated to them early on that where we could serve as a, uh, dispensary in any way, we were willing to. In fact, you know, there's been some discussion that there may be a place set up at Reynolds Road, right? Fifty-nine hundred Reynolds Road?
Can that be for testing? You want me to talk about that?
Okay, so, not for the vaccine?
No.
What are we testing for still? The standard COVID test?
Right.
Okay.
So, right now, the health department on Battle Creek tests five hundred, eight hundred people a day.
Which is probably higher than ever.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so, they are going to convert that facility into a mass vaccination site, so they gotta move the testing sites. So, we're working with them to move the testing to Reynolds Road. And that could happen soon, like within the next couple of weeks.
So, would we, is the vaccine here?
We have issues with it, we can use it all the time.
The vaccines we have?
When, when we get vaccines in our freezer, will be out of the fire department?
Uh, community room is what we're hoping for. Yes.
The procedure for keeping track of who has had what vaccine, are we doing that in-house here as well? Is there a procedure already?
Mm-hmm. It's called GRIT. GRIT is an acronym, Georgia Reporting Information, something or another. And that, that's what actually the mayor signed back in December, that allows us to give the vaccines. Yes, we have to track every single person to give a vaccine to.
The Pfizer, the Moderna, whatever. And if, if they have to have a second one, whatever, they, would they have to come here and get the second?
Then I was gonna read my question, what was the...
Well, you wouldn't have to come here, but you have to have the same vaccine, you can't get the Moderna first, the Pfizer first.
So, I mean, you're, you're tracking, we're going to the database and the whole department knows who's had what.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, this guy did the shot tomorrow, and how many days before?
The Moderna is twenty, twenty-eight days. There is a little bit of wiggle room on either side of that, but twenty-eight is the optimal.
And I would say you come back to the same place, and you would know that I've already had one of them.
Right, you get in the system and see that you've already had the one, and what day you had it on. Also, on the testing, we have the Vannix rapid test now. Uh, originally, they were sent to us just to test our firefighters, but now open that up to where we can test our police officers and our elected officials. If you're symptomatic, we don't do just random tests, you have to be exhibiting symptoms of COVID, and then you can do the test in there.
What, what's the response?
Fifteen minutes.
And it, it's just a five-hour paranoid type of people? So, let's say...
Even I can do it. I, I tested someone today, so they don't have to be paranoid.
Maybe I'm answering the wrong question. So, so let's say, a, a business owner feels like, you know, his staff has been in contact with someone, right? And whatever the time period is, so we can send somebody over here and get it.
No, no, it's just firefighters, law enforcement, and elected officials for the City of Ma.
Because I know there was some issues as to turnaround times, and, and now I'm just dealing with private sector in general, there were some folks we were dealing with maybe last week, but they were still telling us that the turnaround time for some of the places they were going was crazy.
To get the results back, or to get in, to get tested?
It was twofold. On one hand, it says it was, it was easy to theoretically get the test, but you had to do a consultant first, a consultation. And the consultation, that all of them were booked. So, it's like, okay, it's one thing to say, I can get you a test, and I'll get you an answer in twenty-four hours, wonderful. I'll, I'll see you in two weeks with my consultation before you can go take the test.
I've heard like that.
It's still a timeline issue, and you're going, okay, now I'm just not able to take the test forever. And then when I take the test, it'll be twenty-four hours, same thing, it's too long.
So, the fifty-nine hundred Reynolds Road test site will be rapid testing, or the swap?
That is the swap. That's the twenty-four to seventy-two hour turnaround, or forty-eight to seventy-two hours.
So, then that would be the place to bypass some of those other considerations that we can get.
Yeah, it's drive-through, I think you're supposed to have a referral or an appointment, but I think they will, if you get in line, I think they just take you.
And they're also, they're constantly, they're, they're accepting appointments if you are with Kaiser. Should you, I think they say, if they're hot, they're older first, and I, and I think they, they're taking the oldest right now. So, if anyone has Kaiser, they can go in.
Sweet. Other question?
One more question about a reaction, you know, like we have a regular reaction message board we have, you know? Like we said, uh, should they take anything for it, like Tylenol, anything, or, or K and A, or...
You can, but it was, it was minor, I mean, it was just like...
It doesn't...
Bruise, I mean, it wasn't debilitating or anything.
It's not gonna affect the vaccine?
Disinfect...
No, no, no. But I need for sure I have not had saline water injected my arm, which is one of the conspiracies going around. Yeah, there was something went in my arm, because it, it hurt a little bit, so...
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any more questions?
That's all we have to say. Then, going further down, uh, Resolution Twenty-One, I was wondering, um, you know, it's an election year, we're, uh, two members of the council coming up, and they say they qualify for the office of two hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty cents.
Three hundred.
Did the next judge break?
Oh, yeah, we skipped over the mayor.
Uh, reappointment of Judge Bray, I thought we already had, we'll have a discussion. And anybody have any issues with that? Resolution for all, and, uh, resolution related to the land bank, we've had some discussions with that over the last couple of months. And I believe, I believe so, point already, that...
Well, I mean, you, you, the resolution does not identify your appointment, so she will remain your appointee unless you want to appoint somebody else.
And this is where, I think, we got all the people...
And this is with the county, that, whatever the city has...
Yeah, the taxes and all the different things, and things we've talked about for a while. And then, ordinance Twenty-one, one public work supervisor job description and pay classification, and you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, well, so it's gonna be, it's the first reading tonight, which means you won't be voting on it, but our charter requires that any changes to job descriptions have to be approved by ordinance, not just a vote. Um, you have a letter that Billy has outlined some of the changes, like, we've added, uh, basic computer skills,
Correct.
Uh, some experience as a lead or supervisor, uh, and then, if you remember, we talked earlier about removing the exempt status from every job description, so we don't get caught up in, in, in not changing things that we mean to change. And then we are also, the pay for that position was, uh, had been assigned of the wrong number from the pay classification, we're just making that correction. Um, and that's basically it. But again, if you have questions about that, you can let Billy and I know, because you won't be voting on that till the next meeting.
Oh, good. Everybody have a chance to read that? Ms. Knight, issues?
No issues, no.
Ms. Tran? Van? I see I'm good. Ms. Doris?
What did she say?
I think she said, I'm good.
I look at her.
But you can read her lips, that's pretty much what she said. We'll start going emails, and I'll, I'll be good. Ms. Quark? Alright, that pretty much rounds out the agenda. Got a couple minutes, let's, let's go ahead and throw some of the things that you said back in.
We're looking at, we're done on the, uh, uh, concerns regarding trash.
Trash.
Uh, it seems as if people don't, did not get the letter, didn't understand the letter, or whatever. Yard, leaves, grass, should go into what type of?
Round paper bag.
So we're, people are still putting out plastic bags.
Correct.
Um, people are still putting their cans on the curb. So, uh, my neighbor across the street has two TVs that's been out there for a month now.
That should've got picked up.
That should've been bigger.
But shouldn't he have called?
They should've actually reached out and requested a bulk pickup.
Exactly, so.
Yeah, but TVs, if you just put them out there, you guys would've picked those up.
But, I mean, you're not mixing, we don't wanna do that. We don't wanna?
Why are you not? It's, it's too tired of separate different things.
So during the learning curve, we're gonna pick up whatever's out there, but ideally, someone should, uh, the resident, the account holder, should email or call to make an appointment, so we know to go get it. But if we see it, we're gonna get it.
I'm gonna send you some addresses. Send some letters to those addresses.
I do wanna respond to that, because what's happening is, some people aren't just telling us, they're just putting stuff out there.
Yes.
And so what I've had to, to do every morning is have the staff route the city, and see where we have stuff that people basically have put out. And we've been not getting anything. Now, Victor sends me a report, uh, that outlines those individuals that have reached out and said, hey, we've got bulk items that need to be picked up, and we basically pick them up. But as Ms. Sylvia said, we don't pass up anything. If it's out there, and it's on the curb, and it needs to be picked up, we're picking it up, taking it back, and we're sorting through it. And if we miss something, and we do, I just need to know. And you can send me an email, and I can give you my phone number, because I'm not gonna shy away from going out to get it, and get it back to the shop and dispose of it the way it needs to be disposed of. But this, this is pretty interesting, because, again, we made it perfectly clear, let us know, we'll come get it. But a lot of people aren't. They're just setting stuff up.
And the other thing is that I know Peacock is a, you know, kind of a, you know, hit or miss. My good geezer buddy Marvin Chisnell, I'm sure he's called, and I'm sure he's, uh, um, um, he, he's going through some rough times right now, and he takes pride in his yard, and when he goes and puts his little yellow can with his little tree limbs and stuff in it out there, um, he, his, or his, as he said the other day, he put his little bundle, they picked up stuff from across the street, and then get his. So he said the trash, sometimes they'll pick the trash up, and will get his. So, um.
And Billy, we've talked about Martin before, and we need to, you know, and, because remember, the people picking up the trash are not the same people that are picking up the limbs.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Um, but, you know, it's just one of those things, we need to get in the habit where, um, where he's concerned, that, you know, we're not gonna ask him to, because he's, he is going to do all the work himself, and we appreciate that. So we're not gonna ask him to take on more than he's able. We're just gonna get it. So we, it's just one of those things we need to keep on our reminder list, right? But yeah, I mean, any, and y'all know, anybody texts me, calls me, emails me, we're gonna send, or go out there and get it, that, that right then, so. Um, and unfortunately, everybody doesn't have my phone number and Billy's, but they're certainly welcome to it, so share it if you want to.
Alright, if anybody needs it, I'm, I'm, I'll give it to you. It's not a problem, but at the end of the day, I want everyone in the room to know that we're not gonna shy away from picking up anything. We repeatedly gone to residents and had conversations about the trash bags being placed in the leaves. No one's listening. I pick up anywhere from twenty or thirty bags, or even more, per week.
Plastic bags.
Plastic bags filled with leaves. What we do is take them back to the yard, and I actually get community service workers to assist us in opening the bags, and we dump the leaves, we put them in the container with the wood pieces, and we send it to the yard.
So, so since we have this new system, we need to really step it up and, and let people know, again, what the procedures are. I mean, do we start leaving notes on the mailbox, or warnings, or something on the mailboxes for them to get more engaged? Because we need to do something, otherwise it's gonna, it's the same people.
And you're, we do, yes, and we're happy to add more addresses, we're gonna, we visit them, we leave them notices, we've got videos on the website, we've mailed out more than one notice, and, and we can mail something every week, and there are going to be people who still don't read it. And, and I'm not saying that's bad, but we just have to figure out a different way to solve it. And it's gonna be the accumulation of these, because it tends to be some of the same people and over and over, which is helpful, because then we know what to go look for.
And also, I'm noticing stuff on the side of people's houses, too, accumulating.
You mean trash bags?
Yeah. Stuff.
Let me know, we'll go out there, tell them.
Alright, we're gonna take, um, about a two-minute break right here, and then we'll start the sit-down.
Why are we talking about any paperwork?
No, I'm talking about.
Warren is, is not feeling well yet, so obviously he would like him to stay home, which he has. And, next I would, it kind of, you know, as you get into some of these discussions about trash, for example, we have a lot of debate as to what's really happening out there, and what are our real solutions. So it's a little bit of this, but we're gonna ask you a couple of questions, and you gotta kind of tell us if you see, if you see that to be a challenge. And this is related to now trash bags. We know that, and you have to decide for yourself whether this is the totality of the problem, or a portion of the problem, and is the solution something that makes sense, or this isn't a pretty good solution? I mean, we have a number of people who have used their recyclable containers as garbage can. Not for years. Well, when we got out of the other program with the other company, they obviously took the container away. So you now have some folks who are a little bit not happy about that, right, because their favorite container is now gone. And in some cases, we have some issues where, you know, the lighter containers, the little small plastic ones, you know, they're, they're being taken back to your back door, uh, wherever you've got them, and the wind blows them over. The can tips over, the top polish off, and now everybody's mad, you can put your garbage can back on the center slab where you had it. And it's not necessarily the fault of the person who put it back, you put it back correctly, but if it fell, it fell, that's just facts. So there's a question as to, should the city, and in a one-time only agreement, if you will, they have these ninety-five yard trash cans that will look very similar to what that recyclable container was, should the city purchase those trash cans? They would still be out of it, and then we would deliver one to every house. And then, this point going forward, we start to solve it. Uh, so one-time expense is pretty high. And you'd like to be able to get a, a pretty good deal, I mean, it's something we might be able to cover under the twenty-twenty-one floss, but the question is, might I purchase my own? If anybody care, you know, are we, is it something we should engage or not? We, we do know we're getting a little heat out there, right, from those type of issues, and, and not over and above, are you picking up? It's, it's a little more nitpicky than that. Um, so that's where you open up the question, you say, is, is that an easy solution? If you purchase them, you figure out about a hundred grand, right?
Where, I expected to have the numbers yet, but I just don't. And he did, uh, Tierso did send an email saying that should the city want to put their logo on the side of it, at that number, we wouldn't have to pay more money. But I told him I'd need to know how long it would take to mark them all, which is part of the equation, too. So I, is part of the discussion, you would want to know, do you wanna have your logo on the side of it?
Well, let's just go with the trash can first.
Okay.
Interested?
So aren't we going back to what we had, except the city is, the cost of, of, of the, of this new service, the city is taking up the cost of this new service? If you're saying we're gonna invest a hundred thousand dollars for trash cans, when we've already said that you provide your own?
Well, we know we've said it.
Yes.
Alright, and, and that's not a problem, alright? The question comes down to, if, if the issue is that much of a problem, in terms of what they're throwing away and different things, is that a solution? That's what's on the tech, you know, we're discussing, we decided for yourself, if you don't think it's that much of a problem, you know, John's got an issue, that's John's problem. And you go, okay, I can live with it either way, but I do think it's a challenge out there. And that, those are, those people are not happy when they call. I read a couple of emails. Let's just say that they're not only off-color, but they're probably inappropriate, I agree just about anything. So you go, that's not fair, you know, that's not fair to your staff, that's not fair to the company. And then that just builds on, you know, real issues, and we know we have some real issues, but you throw in the real issues with somebody who probably doesn't have a real issue, they're just upset that we took something away from them, they just want it back. You have to say, is that a solution that makes sense? It's worth discussing, because it's not like wanting to be.
One, one of my concerns is, and Billy, you know, chime in here, but one of the problems that we have, and again, remember, if we have several hundred, many hundreds customers, we may hear from twelve people. You know, and, and maybe six of them are somebody that we hear from regularly, and that mystifies all of us. Why are we seeing the same mistakes at the same address? I mean, constant trying to solve it. But if part of what we hear is, is that they took some of the bags out of my can, but not all of them, my concern with going with a ninety-five gallon versus maybe a sixty-five gallon, is, is not like, are we inviting, like, that problem to escalate? If they aren't taking all the bags from the smaller vessels, then putting a larger one out there, are we setting ourselves up, you know, for disappointment?
At least the larger one has wheels.
Didn't we, didn't we have a capacity limit?
Yeah, one hundred fifty gallons.
And, and so, if they're putting it, okay, the, I, I think the issue is this. I think, I think that a lot of people are just not adhering to the rule. That's what I think. Driving around looking at them so.
And you've got people who have a thirty-gallon can, and that, they're not gonna go buy another one, and they're gonna fill that and stack around it. Well, you can't do that.
Okay, so what happened to the little tickets you put on the mailbox, or you, you give them?
Yeah, well, I mean, and, and Billy can tell you, we're going out there, it's not, we're leaving the notes, we're visiting them personally, we're knocking on their door.
Because they're, they're paying less, right?
Well, I think, there's another challenge.
We got a group.
Yeah, there's another piece to this, because we took away their recycling, so now.
We didn't?
Well, we, well, recycling.
The company did, they said we're not doing it anymore.
We, we no longer have recycling, so, so now the question becomes, where do you put your cardboard? Right? So some people are putting it in the can, some people are just stacking a big pile of it somewhere above the can, and, and so the provider may pick it up, they may not pick it up, then that creates another scenario where we have to go out and pick up cardboard, and.
Why wouldn't they pick it up?
Because it's not back.
It's not back.
It's not, as they pick up the bag truck.
Okay.
So, um.
And if it's bagged, and they don't pick it up, what happens?
I mean, you know, they shouldn't be, yeah, they shouldn't be discerning what's in the bag, you know, unless it was a hazardous material. In fact, I think the, the, the contract language, and even the code language says, anything that cannot reasonably be put in a garbage bag, um, that, that minimum size that we have in there, that could be scheduled for bulk pickup, that would include maybe some larger cardboard boxes. But, you know, we just.
Well, and also this, the, the company's only had a contract for sixty days. We went through two holidays, including Christmas. I think Christmas is always a disaster, and I wish, you know.
Bad stuff, yeah.
Some other things. So, you know, if you're just giving them a reasonable opportunity to do the job correctly, you're, you're going, we've had, we've had some fun, right? So I don't know that that's all fair, but if you just kind of listen a little bit, and then you try to say, what is a potential solution? It may not be what we choose today, as a lawman, you know, and you go, okay.
That's a lawman, that's a lawman.
Are we, are we having an issue with the company, um, knowing who's on the list? Because you said you would take, put a can for every household. Every household is not on the service, right?
Every account holder.
Every account holder.
Yeah, you give it to the people who are in service with us.
Right, so is the company having a problem knowing who's on the list and who's not, as far as?
I, I think it'd be early side, some of them, they just missed one side of the street or the other. I think that was just a matter of not really knowing the city well. Um, I think that's improved a pretty good bit.
We, we had some, kind of some repeating problems at North Ridge and Childers Way.
Right.
But those have been.
And Peacock.
They've been, no, I'm talking about, like, we didn't have, like, the whole street of Peacock being missed.
Right.
Childers Way and North Ridge got missed a few times, as a whole street in a whole neighborhood, but that has been resolved.
Okay.
But, and again, you know, we do get missed pickup, you know, you, if you call us with a missed pickup, we have twenty-four hours to send them back out there and get it.
But what about, did they, did they go back and add the streets that they were not going to in that area, that like, for instance, by me, uh, Strack at Arms Court, they, they pick up for me on Wednesday, and they pick up on that little, little cul-de-sac on Thursday? And they bypassed that, when they picked me up?
Yeah, we did, we did have conversation with them. Um, they have made some adjustments to their pickup route.
Okay.
Adden them also had a supervisor trail behind the truck and, and try to make sure that the persons that were doing the pickup, you know, were consistent with regards to what they were picking up. Uh, I think it's just a matter of time. I think, once they get another couple of months underneath their belt, I think we'll see some better, it'll improve a little bit more and more. Uh, and I've got confidence in them that they're gonna step it up and get it done.
Uh, what about their fleet maintenance?
Their fleet maintenance?
Yeah, because I'm seeing a lot of leakage that's, on my street, there's a big.
I will, I will have a discussion, um, if necessary.
But just remember, we, we gotta know about it.
Right.
Because, like, we have these other companies that are using, especially, um, your street, like Cut Through. They're not, we're not in service with them, and they're using Cut Through, now we're sending them letters, and we're letting them know that if we see their trucks cut through our neighborhoods, we're gonna give them a citation. But, you know, if, you know, if, the more we can narrow down the timeframe, the more we can hold waste bro accountable for anything that's happening, which is why, just remember, if you call us three days from now and say, they missed my trash three days ago, we've missed the opportunity to resolve it twenty-four hours.
Um, you know, and, and, um, I've gone out and spoken to the guys that, that's on my street, um, you know, instead of bringing their can to the trash and put it in there, they've just picked the bags up, and then they take and throw, and some stuff fell out, and so I was behind the truck. Because I can pick it up from the street, you know, when you, uh, throw it and stuff spill out, you know, you broke the bag, and stuff spilled out, so.
No, they shouldn't be doing that.
I know, so.
That's what we need to solve.
Yeah.
You know, they, they should bring their can to, to the can and fill from can to can, instead of, because you don't know what's in the bags when they pick them up.
Well, I, I think part of that, too, is, um, sanitation is a, is a very ugly job, and I didn't see a lot of turnover at First Hill. And so they may get somebody trained, and two weeks later, that person may not. And so they may get somebody trained and two weeks later, that person may not show up for work and they have to get another person. So that's an ongoing battle. But I can honestly say I've followed behind the truck a number of times just to kind of get a good feel for what they were doing. They do have a pickup truck that trails the trash truck to make sure the guys truly understand what they should and should not be doing. And again, one way we can fix the problem is when people, when that crew does something that they shouldn't, please let us know. We will jump on them real quick while I can and get it under control.
Yeah, because like even the bag, what you use in example, when I throw my trash away, when I threw it in there, did that break the bag? Or they're picking it up, broke the bag? So you're sort of, like it gets down to such a hair splitting situation. So technically, your bag should be secure. Well, if you broke it when you threw it in the trash can, that's only, it, it's impossible to track down to that increment.
Well, if they take their can to the can and they lift it out into their can, they won't be, you know...
Now, they don't do, they take the can to the truck. Well, he did talk about starting, our last meeting, starting to use those staging cans. Because right now, they don't use those staging cans. They take your can to their truck or they pull the bags out and take it to the truck. They're not putting them in a staging can.
No, on my street, now they're pulling their cans up.
So they may have started doing that. But like, at first, they weren't using those at all. Because we talked to them about that being a possible solution, so...
Yeah, they're pulling their own cans because mine's not that street.
In the meantime, can we kind of send a letter to all the citizens? Can I highlight all the rules and regulations for trust of one more time?
Well, just do it in part of the newsletter. Because you got to know the newsletter is going to come out soon.
Yeah, because, you know, just remember, every time you send a notification out, I mean, it's not lots of money, but just, and we certainly can. But we've sent out, I guess, three mailers, including a fourth if we look at the last newsletter. So, but you know, I don't know, maybe that's it. Maybe just inundating them with more information. And don't forget, we've got the videos on the online too that people can look at, so...
Well, now everybody uses it online, remember that.
Well, no, but I'm just saying that's just one more way that we're trying to communicate. And I mean, even like my neighbor Dan Friend, you know, I've literally told him three times that you, you can't put bulk items out without letting public work out anymore. But, and he's a smart guy and, you know, spry and fairly young. But it's just habits. People have a lot going on and it's trying to help people create new habits. That's all it is.
And, and I think also a hundred thousand dollars is a lot to pay for cans that we, we, you know, people are brutal when it comes to trash cans, if they...
Oh, I understand.
You know, so would they...
Which is one of the reasons we didn't want to get into it at the first place. The question just comes down to, yeah.
And I think over time, people will start buying, purchase another can, you know?
Is there another way to recover the cost, what a new contract, you can increase the price a little bit?
Well, once we, once we kind of said, I wouldn't, and, and do it yet, we just give them the price. Say, we're going to do something and wait until the contract price goes up.
Well, my question would be, okay, let's say the council decided to buy these cans. And you give them to every account holder. You're not paying rent for them. You're not buying them. You're giving them to them. And they move and take their can with you.
Right.
I know.
You know, so it's going to be that...
Ongoing.
Replacement cycle too.
And damage, if it's damaged.
So I don't know if you, if you, if they give us a down, like some sort of refund, you know, when they move or leave or, or quit service, if they, their can's still there, they can return it to get money back. But, you know, that's what I would worry about is we're paying for it and then we're going to see them disappear. And, you know, then you're going to have to replace them.
Well, we should remind them that we gave them a reduction in cost in the deal. That money, you should purchase another can if you need more.
I'm with you on that. I just, you know, when you see an issue, you want to say, look, you know, talk about it. What do you think?
Well, the trash has been nightmares.
Okay, Ms. Tran, any opinions?
In the past two, ten months, how many report we have related to the can problem itself? Not with the pickup, but the can issue?
Well, I don't know that I'll find out after a week.
I don't have report numbers. I, I just have discussions.
Emotional scorcity.
And what, what's, um, define that? What does she mean, the can issue?
Well, in this case, she's looking for like a true log or a report from the city saying, this is what we got as a challenge. I'm just saying, when people see you and the position you're in, I'm personally not keeping a log of everybody who's got a challenge with a discussion. I'm going out of the cities, that's a whole different handle in terms of housing logging and complaints or otherwise. I don't know.
I mean, I'm sure we can get that information. I just don't have it right now.
And another thing that we should look at is that our contract is that we provide a 150 gallons coating cup. So if the bin is not 150 gallons and we're providing one bin or two bins, if we provide bins and we say we, we begin 150 gallons this time, but yet we provide a bin that's not 150 gallons. So, yeah, that's something to look at as well.
I think 150 gallon bin would be rather a lot.
I don't really think they make, I don't know that they make it.
I think 95 is, and I love the biggest one, low tax. And it's the same one that American has up on the other side. Good point. Ms. Knight, any comments?
Um, I'm kind of with Dorothy in the sense that with the savings, you know, just plan appropriately to have the, the right can. I don't know about the city kind of diving in and, and being responsible for that type of purchase and replacement cycle and damage. When my can gets damaged, um, yeah.
Okay, go on.
We say, let's get the estimated of how much would cost us. And then we make the decision whether we do that or not. Because from now, we keep hearing talking about the possibility of the rest of the increase, increasing the cost. But we don't know how much it would be if it's decent and we have, we, we earn customer satisfaction and then it's my worth it. But if the cost comes out too high, then we will do it at the...
But in this case, it doesn't look like there's enough support to do so. I don't want to waste the chemical.
Well, just remember, I mean, he's already putting that number together for us in terms of 65 versus, and 95. So when I get it, I'll just score it, you know?
And then that creates the other issue about people moving and taking the can and then we have to replace it for every time someone moved. I mean, we're creating more expense and more problems rather than let people purchase their own.
Yeah, I want to solve problems.
Purchase their own.
But you'll hear it.
Yeah, we're, we're creating a cycle, a cycle of a problem. We're creating a cycle rather than really trying to solve it.
Okay, go on. All right, same. So we'll get the data, but, but at this point, it doesn't look like we got some support or best. A pretty cool thing, the, the moral welcome signs is we're going to call them. Yeah, I, I guess everybody had a chance to go out and take a peek?
I believe so. I left at 6:20 and Councilwoman Knight was the only person that hadn't got an opportunity. I don't know if she had a chance to see it.
Yeah, I, I probably was, I did not have the opportunity to right by. I had to turn to family business.
Okay, no problem. All right, so you, you got the visuals, right? You know, in the discussions out there on the floor that, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Billy, but I, I believe the answer was, the one that we saw was a 12.
That is correct.
And the one we recommend is just a little bit clearer than that, which would be a 10. There'd be a slight adjustment in the value. And that's one of the reasons we didn't put it on the floor for both, is we know that that number would change slightly.
Yes, sir.
Is it a 10 or 12?
The one that's out there now is a 12. We go to a 10.
The size of the pixel.
So it's a little clearer, a little clearer in terms of that.
So, okay, we're...
We're getting a better one. And I should get that back.
Yeah, all right. And then we obviously know where they're located. And then one of the additional things, and it's pretty, I mean, it, it doesn't look that big. But when you see the man standing there, you know, that's a, that's a pretty readable sign, right? So your, your sign is so much, but we're, we're making a statement when they come in. They're, they're not going to miss us, okay? Which, a lot, okay? So when you look at the, the sign and then the concept, of course, the, the pricing number will change.
So hopefully we'll just get that new information. And unless there's a problem, Mayor, we can just put it on the next council.
Yeah, unless the, the pricing numbers are still seen.
Yeah.
But I heard like 20%, I think 20% of the thing at the top. And then he had some warranty issues and things like that that he talked about. And then what about vandalism and, and what are the ways to change it? Additionally, normally this would be something you might cover under like a SLOSS fund or we want to cover under the Hotel Montauk tax. And there's a reason. That tax is collected to promote business and tourism in the city itself. So the entities we want to promote on there are our hotels and our businesses. So there shouldn't be any reason that they shouldn't be willing to pay for that because then they get some digital signage abilities, especially small independent businesses. So once we can kind of come up with some agreements, and that means we'll pass it, we'll probably cover it. And then we're going to ask the DMO, when it's energized, to pay us back.
Well, so just remember, that's certainly a path forward. But you can also directly spend the product development portion.
Oh, perfectly.
You don't... That's right. So now, when, when, can we see the, the next? The ver, the, the 10 pixel, will we be, will we have the opportunity to see that clarity difference?
They don't have one, the, I don't think they have one that...
I don't think they have one, but what I can do is ask the...
Where it's been installed somewhere else?
Yes, and/or see if in fact...
They, they're saying that the, the one that Harley Davidson used, the 10, not what they tell us.
Oh, okay.
So it's something similar.
It's similar, but he did say there was something about the RBG, the color coding in there and how they use the one at Harley Davidson, which he said is not as designable. So the way we're going to use ours is as designed because the warranty applies. But if you use it differently and you put some software in there that, you know, makes it look different, then, then your warranty does not apply. It looked pretty good even as it stood. But one of his comments was, if you ever had a need, you know, then he would come back out and change it out. Why in the world would we not make the right decision at the right time?
Right, right.
And just said, I need you to come back for years.
But what did he, did he speak on, and I apologize, I didn't make it out there. I didn't want to leave the doors unattended, but what is the resiliency of the surface? If somebody literally went out there and punched it?
You're, the way those pixels are set up, you punch it, you're only going to damage a certain area. A sign is still going to function as designed. It's still going to continue to do what it only does. It's just that small area that needs to be replaced.
So like when I see a billboard that's...
And he mentioned vandalism and, and in terms of, the question I asked him is if I threw a hammer at it, right? And just said, okay, what are we going to have where the whole thing goes out? Or what is it, lifespan? It's got a seven year warranty to it. So if it was me and I'm, I'm doing digital, let, let's just assume that the end of seven years is toast.
Yeah.
Okay, and you'll end up getting something else. Because it seems like as soon as the warranty's out, things break. And then seven years from now, it'd be very hard for us to decide what technology is going to be available. It might be, you know, a super, you know, great...
Hologram.
The next great thing. Or it could just hopefully be less expensive. But there's your visual.
So what is the screen? The composition of the screen? The outside of the screen or what is that?
It's polymer, plastic, something?
It's all plastic. It's a, it's a heavy coated plastic type material. I don't know specifically what it means.
Maybe fiberglass, you know, if someone throws something.
It's only going to damage the area in which it hits.
The impact.
Impact. It's not going to damage the entire sign.
Now, what if a car ran into it? Is the, I, I, I only say that as we, does the warranty cover that or is it just...
Insurance, that would be insurance. He said whatever our insurance was, we can deduct it and then there was something.
And I'm glad you mentioned that because the base of the sign itself, the sign is going to be set up, it's going to set off the ground. That base is concrete. So if someone jumps that curb, they're going to hit the concrete blocks first, but they'll hit sun.
And before you pass out, remember, if you didn't hit the block wall, you would still hit the railroad tracks.
There you go.
And you're not going anywhere either way, you know? So, but it's a state. You come off that interchange. And right now, it looks pretty cool because you got the American flag in there. But, you know, know that it's going to scroll. There, there's some rules on the state of Georgia, billboards. Remember, this is ours, right? So it doesn't apply to us, you know? But I'm sure there'll be some logic at some point. And, and the first two years, we can use their graphic designs rather than having to do something else. I, I think it'll probably be somewhere in between. GDI makes it so you don't freak out. Ours might be a little bit more than the slow train.
But technically, these aren't billboards. They're monuments, aren't they?
That's, that's correct. But he's saying that the digital billboards that you see out there, they have rules in terms of how they scroll.
Oh, I see.
You would just say, okay.
So is that the one that, the, one that they, you know...
On the other side of the road. That's a traditional billboard.
So they're under a different...
That's correct. And, and it just simply says, you know, it can change 10 times an hour or 10 times a minute, right? And it, it's usually stacked. So it's like, think of it as a PowerPoint slide. Comes in, there it is, goes away, new PowerPoint kind of fades in and comes out. We, we can literally do the football game, right? Now, that...
How cool would that be?
It might come on track again.
Even, man, you, you won't make it, but you do a video.
Well, right, but it's, you know, something along those lines. The bottom line is, we, we probably, depending on who's winning.
Yeah, I mean, maybe you can send a quick, a quick message out there, you know, go dance with John.
See John, dance with John or call. But how do you just...
Or if you want some really expensive cabins.
But is the sign have the capability to do remotely?
Yes, yes, yes. Two capabilities. One is wifi and one was a cell phone. You said this, the digital billboards are now done by cell.
So where is this controlled?
So that's what I'm saying is like, right now, our marquee has, is controlled from a single computer inside City Hall. But, and do I hear you saying that multiple people could be set up to, not that they would be, but like...
But that, that, I wouldn't recommend it because...
Well, yeah, obviously.
But the marquee is...
Some of the stuff they might write, you won't, you know, you're going to be like...
But the marquee that we have...
Not to cut you short, but the way that it was explained, you, you could set it up in a number of different ways. You could set it up, for example, you could allow someone to create something, but it has to come through a channel to be approved before it could actually be inputted onto the board.
Oh, sure, yeah. We do that with the marquee.
And then two, what I liked about it is it, it has the capability of getting female alerts or amber alerts. You know, we want that switch to be turned on. It's just a matter of flipping a switch. And each time, you know, a female amber alert comes out, it shows on the screen also. So it has a lot of really neat features. And so I actually got you a book.
Yay!
Because I thought for certain you might want to know. So I will hand it on.
So they have a...
We have a...
The exception, uh... I'm sorry, Mayor?
Yeah, so one concern about this is I, I like the idea. But my concern is the policy and procedure. Do we have, do we have three quotations, three price? Because I have been asking to see the detail of the three potential vendors. And I have nothing beside what is the total price?
I sent that out today earlier.
What is come, what belongs with each provider? Because this provider might, because one provider that we came out, but what they screen out today is the lowest one. But we have the other two, the price is higher and one is almost double in price. So I wonder, what is the detail of the offer? So I wonder, what is the detail of the offer? What is the difference to have a huge difference? I don't have that information, and I don't know if any council has that information.
But what, did you talk that way? First, whenever we're trying to defend one guy, um, we like to get three proposals for a similar concept, and they have to do the exact same thing. And partially because it's our work, right? So, you know, John's art can't really be sold to somebody else, but the idea is the same, and the, and the visual sections there. My understanding is we have three.
Yeah, and well, we, I sent the, an email in response to Councilwoman Tran's request that has more details for ASIN and the Art Studio, but the third quote, um, that Billy got was just verbal, is that right?
That is correct.
There's no details, but I sent that an email earlier today, I can't remember.
And isn't that was related down here from the contractor where you had the three signs? ASIN's, two thousand and one, and Capstone, right?
Yeah, she was looking for more detailing, and I put it, Dorothy, you should have a copy on your desk.
And just to kind of chime in, one thing that each of the vendors, uh, made it perfectly clear. Not each vendor is using the same material with regards to how they make their signs. Uh, each one has a different way of doing it and using a different type of material.
You talking about the base or the, just the digital?
But I'm talking about all the other pieces that go to it. Um, so, so costs can be, um, increased or decreased based on where that particular vendor is getting his product.
Well, well, that's true, but let's, let's look at some, right? So obviously, the one we're talking about is the two thousand and one Art Studio sign, right?
Yes, sir.
And then let's just make quick math. Every other one of the proposals is double the price. That's, that's, you know, that's a lot.
Yeah, but I, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilwoman, but I think she was wanting to make sure we were comparing apples to apples. Why is it double? Is it double with the same material, same size, same product?
Same size, same, I sent out the same scope to each contractor. I created a scope of services and sent it to each one and said, give me a price per sign. And each one came back with their prices. Now, there were a couple of questions that were asked about the type of material that they could use to make the signs, and I clarified that information for each one, and then I shared that information to each one of them after I clarified it. So everybody was on the same page. Some contractors, I, my personal take on why, uh, two thousand and one Art Studios is a little less is because they're a smaller firm, and their overhead is not as large as some of the, the other two players. I did my homework and started looking at some of the signs that they've created. And, uh, for example, ASIN's, uh, they have just about did every sign in every city from East Pointe to Fairman to Union City, and they, they're a big outfit. Uh, I did my research with, uh, two thousand and one Art Studio. They're a smaller firm. They've done some work here in the city. Their work looks really good. They stand behind their work. I feel very comfortable that they're going to give us a great product.
Those are the people we met out there.
Yes, sir. And so I've said that I would, you know, of course, I'm going to be on the ground, boots on the ground, to make sure that whatever we've agreed to get and we're going to pay for, we're going to get what we paid for. Uh, so I'm very comfortable and com- comfortable and confident that they'll do it just.
I'd say that with the shame and the meat offer, the meat price offer, what is the warranty on that? How long, uh, and what is the, how many years do they have on that warranty? Sometimes we can pay a little bit more, but we have a long, a, a, a bigger protection, stop my welfare, so...
I think they said it's seven years.
Seven, seven years.
Seven years.
Seven years, warranty, service, and parts.
Eight signs is five years.
Yeah, well, I know, but I'm saying with...
No, I'm telling you, Dorothy, it just has been all of them.
Yeah.
So, so the Art Studio is seven years.
Correct.
The ASIN's is five years.
Correct.
But we don't know the warranty on the other one because we didn't get it.
They didn't give us a warranty because they didn't go into any detail.
But like, say for example, this part, this, this what we're going to call fabricated structure from Art Studio.
Correct.
I don't, I don't even see the corresponding description on this ASIN's. So I, it may not be as itemized for that kind of comparison, right?
Correct.
I mean, I think it's just, the whole sign, other than the digital piece, is lumped together in one price on the ASIN's.
Correct.
We don't have the same breakdown.
ASIN didn't break theirs down like, uh, like Art Studio. And Art Studio came back and provided additional information after we started looking at the numbers. I started to drill down specifically. I need to know everything with regards to how you plan to fabricate the sign so that I could be able to talk about what Mayor and Council going for.
Does that answer the questions?
Yeah, thank you.
So, uh, we'll probably have that on the agenda at the next council meeting, and with the exception of, you know, if the price gets crazy, they, they told us that probably wasn't true. Um, and then I think he said their, their turnaround time was...
Of course, that is correct. So once we decide what we want, five, within three to five business days, they could have the sign of, of our choice or our liking. Second thing is, if the sign got damaged for whatever reason, it's three to five days to make the repair. They've been consistently saying that they could do it within three days. Uh, but they say five, just to be on the safe side, but they've been doing it in three days. So I think, uh, overall, I, I think we're going to get a good product. I think we're going to, it's going to do exactly what we want it to do, the way we want it. Uh, and I think it's going to be a win-win for us.
We just want to make sure we get the updated logo.
Well, and, and one thing to kind of bear in mind while we're there, let me see if I can... We won't have enough time for that. Um...
I wanted to ask about as far as the composition of the, the framing itself. That, um, that gear off to the left, and it just says City of, and then it has Morrow coming down in a column, and then you've got the same wording to the right in another gear, City of Morrow. Is, is that what we're saying is the final design or is there a little bit of tweaking? Because to me, that, that left side, uh, gear with City of in it is kind of awkward.
Would you, would you, let's just say, uh, in your opinion, would the City of come out completely and just have a plain gear maybe? What are your thoughts?
Yes, yes, well, I mean, if, if there's a way that, you know, you, there can be either something replacing it if you, in order to create a balanced look, um, another symbol or something, or seeing how it takes taking City of out because it's, it's like City of Morrow, City of Morrow, okay, we get it, it's the City of Morrow. That, that left side gear looks awkward with just those two words, and then you literally have it on the board again on the right-hand side.
We can tweak that, that's not a problem. Uh, I can reach out to Art Studio.
You can see something that's tweaked.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Lord did.
And either one works, either, either delete it or just come up with something.
Yeah, you could almost just curve the, the sign and shave the gear off of it, maybe? Maybe give them...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, something that creates, could create that shape without it being a gear and having words in it. Because like I said, to me, it's, it's, it's off.
And you know, and probably you may have some ideas better than, you know, see how it's just, then that goes away completely, and it's just a banner that says Morrow. Or give them, you know, they have an art department, give them an opportunity to...
Or maybe we just have the gear on the, on the bottom left and say, uh, gear, it will quality be closed, and take off the rest, and we just have the, uh, the screen sit on top of whatever, uh, type of thing, just like outside tip and...
You see, it's just like, it's her idea, maybe they were just...
We just have a goal and say, gear will quality be closed, and that's it.
Well, if we try to...
Yeah, let's, let's have play with it and so that we can see, you know, what it looks like with taking that gear off or reshaping, you know, but it's, it seems redundant to have it twice.
That's fine, but whether they just take it out at the top, that, that's fine.
Either way, we want...
Really?
Yes, sir.
Let's, let's try to make it so we get this, this art or whatever it is, um, say by Tuesday next week. So I, I don't want to miss another timeline. In other words, two weeks from now, I want to pull the trigger on this. Three weeks from now, from five weeks from now, I want to look at the digital sign.
Yes, sir.
I like it, and, and the art part should be the easiest one, and Billy, if you want me to be in on that conversation to help translate, I don't know.
Okay.
Got it, all right. Um, I know I've still got Chris on the line, and it's probably not fair to ask him any questions related to, you know, we've got audits and different types of things like that going on, and I don't want to hold you up any longer because it's not necessary to have you on the phone, you don't need to be on it. Uh, but, but in, in terms of what you see out there, Chris, what, what, uh, you know, anything you need from us? I know you just saw it, but, uh, you know, thoughts?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still too early into diving in and inventorying everything that's been done, needs to be done, so I couldn't intelligently answer that question for you this time.
Uh, easy enough. Uh, I appreciate you, and, uh, we're, we're going to just go on then. Um, so now we're going to talk about the beautification, and, and I know that's in here. All right, so I'm, I'm seeing the, the potential... I've, I've never seen this type of, um, fence down here at the bottom. But I understand the chain link fence with the slats, which is kind of interesting. Um, while we don't have to do, you know, cat eyes, you can come in there and, you know, it's a design. So when you do the slats, we could literally create a design that there's fruits and vegetables and pumpkins if we wanted.
There's a question on that fencing, will the slats shade out some of the planters over there? Because, you know, based on that?
They're killing them.
No.
They're small.
So she's going to get shaved, she's going to have a problem.
Your beautification has nothing to do with our growth here.
So tell, so tell me this, and if, but if it was your fence to choose, it would be chain link?
Open.
What, what do you mean open?
I mean, you're talking about putting these slats in there for...
No, I'm saying chain link fence is what you prefer.
The fence doesn't matter.
Huh?
It doesn't matter. We're growing vegetables.
That, that's true, we also don't want a prison.
Uh, well, but not only that, but you do want a fence, otherwise people can get in.
Yes, 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 yeah.
We want, we want a, we want a fence.
Yes.
You know?
It's a tall fence, but what is, what is this? You know, when it, when it says, um, faceted chain link panels adjacent. Now, but what, does somebody have an idea of what that looks like? Because I can't imagine that picture there. One of them?
So...
It almost looks three dimensional.
It's a, it's another type of fencing that she thought of.
Somebody have a real picture of what that looks like?
I can get you one, but it, literally, it would be like the slats or the cups. It's a panel that has some angular, uh, rigid...
That is correct.
That just click onto the chain link. So it, it's just another way to cover up the chain link.
Right, can you see through it?
No.
So that's a shame, but, all right, why don't we try this? Why don't, why don't we get the project moving and get the fence in and get the other parts done? And then when we look at it and we decide that either A looks like a prison or B looks adequate, um, that we can adjust it later.
Okay, well, why that's a problem, obviously, is that it costs a lot of money to fence up.
Well, I think the fence style is probably going to be the same. It would be what might...
Go on it.
Be in front of it, maybe, that obviously can't go all on.
You did the fencing, that is correct, right?
So...
Well, I'll be honest with you, like the cups and the, the slats, I'm not a fan of either one because how do you keep people from pulling them out?
That is correct.
Pulling them out?
Exactly.
And, uh, you know, the, the panels would probably be adhered differently and, and all around the edge, but if you just have these cups, people can literally just poke them out or pull the slat out.
And, and you don't, you don't want to take a, whatever, do, do the spray painting either. Who would get a photo? Remember photos?
So maybe what we need to figure out is...
Just call it, and just say, all right.
Not only that, but also like how, how durable the plant will last before it started to fade and look weird.
I mean, any color substance like that is going to shit, fade in the sunlight.
And the great thing about it is we can, we can decide on going back with the rod iron in the front and chain link around the perimeter or...
Yeah, like a vinyl code chain.
Well, it would be vinyl code chain, all of those black, white, colored chains, we already know that, but, um...
I just don't, I think the way...
Sometimes when you get to a certain point, we could talk to you, yeah.
And, and, and how, when we have a, we should, what to look at, everything that we do, make the decision of, yes. We start to make the decision of, on everything it wants.
Well, to some degree, we got to come up with a construction budget, and we got to approve it, and then we got to get it built.
Three things.
If we're not careful, Dorothy's tomatoes are going to come in.
We need three things.
And she's going to be a little upset when I start yanking them out of the ground.
We need a fence, we need irrigation, and we need a planters.
And I just found the, the kiosk, typical of fans where they use four by four in the, in the trim, would be having kiosk, not really net, but kiosk, or something like that. Well, for sure, it won't look like three.
Well, I just, I mean, I mean, I feel like the way it's tucked in there, and if it's, and it's vinyl coated, and we have some sort of more decorative thing at the front, I, I, I'm just not sure it will look like...
Well, no, no, one additional question. Okay, so in, you know, in the area that we were talking about, that you can kind of brick pavement.
Yes, sir.
Now, obviously, that's now changed to some type of, um, it's not a stain category, this would be a, a coloring category.
That is correct.
All right. Um, sometimes it can be done well, sometimes it can be done poorly. Um, so you look at it and you go, so that's not a true brick pavement thing. Um, you know, I'm not a learned person, right? I, I know what I like when I see, um, but, on the other hand, you can talk a project to death, right? And, and you're just going, okay, you know?
That's, that's for the ADA access, right?
That's right up in that area, that's correct, and then underneath for B.
Yeah, so, so all I would say is because I can't physically put it in my head, but I wouldn't want to hold up the project because of, you know? So the longer we talk, we, you don't have something, and you can't, you can't give me a price.
That's, that is correct.
Without price, which gets administered three times, we, we can't give you construction time. And, you know, at some point, we're, we're, we're pushing the envelope, so are you happy with it?
If we get to three things that we're okay, you all can...
So you're happy with it?
You all can play around, but just don't shade us out.
That's not what I meant.
You know, we need fence, we need the irrigation, and we need the planters, and we're good to go.
Yes, you're happy with it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's not on home, that's, that's, yes.
Are you saying the overall design?
Yeah, I mean, what you see right here, you're happy with it?
Well, um... Oh, yeah, because I think, um, the, the planter boxes that are there and the rest of the, of the grounds can be decided on how we want to do it later. The in-ground area and all of that, we can get the planter boxes, and we can get the irrigation, and we can get the fence. Yeah, we're good.
So is you're happy?
We're good. We're good.
You're good.
So, can, can we, uh, extract?
Ms. Knight, comments?
No comments from me about the garden, no.
Okay, Ms. Tran, you good? I'll tell you the additional comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If it looks terrible, we're going to take your picture with it.
Hey, we, we, we know how to dig in the dirt, we can...
All right, we're good. And, and from there, really, okay, then that means we're, we're getting into some, some little construction.
Yes, sir.
And some other things and timelines. We get regular, I mean, this is all pretty basic stuff, right? Fence, concrete, nothing crazy. Um, and it's got lighting under there in terms of the other things, so that's, I don't want to call it NEPs, but that's certainly electrical plumbing and things, right?
Yes, sir.
And what kind of boxes do we have for something like that? When do we get back it? How, how long before we approve something?
Billy, can we get it, and, and let's don't oversell it. Can we get a cost estimate for the project as detailed in those plans? In two weeks, a month? What is it, next council meeting, the first one in February?
I'd like to have a cost estimate in two weeks.
I can, I can get a cost estimate.
Okay, I guess once we have a cost estimate, then that's two, from a cost estimate, we should be able to get three, three quotes on it?
Yes, sir.
We can talk that for all the time.
So that's, that's, that's four weeks from now.
First meeting in...
And then we, we just have to make sure we pick our construction people, which it's fence and other things, it's not rocket science, I know.
How long will it take to build?
It'll take a build time.
I don't think it's going to take us that long, other than, I mean, once we get the materials for the boxes, they should go fairly quick. Uh, but, um...
Assuming, ma'am, I'll just show them.
I'm going to go back and I'm going to analyze everything, and I'll, I'll have some answers pretty quick to the city manager.
In, in February, first of March?
I know what your timeline is, and I, I've got to meet it, so that's all that matters. I know what your timeline is, and I know I got to work hard and fast, so I got it.
Now that we're going to be out there having a...
I, I would not need a bunch of seniors.
Conversation with her tomato boxes.
I don't, I do not need a bunch of seniors over there.
Twenty, twenty, or just go ahead and do it.
Twenty and twenty to current, well, um, because I, I think I've got a, a ballpark idea of what that's worth in my head. Somebody approved it, you're wrong. Uh, but I think it's within, I think it's under the construction laws of state, so I don't think you have to go full bid. I think you just get your three numbers. I'll be surprised if it's above hundred. I think it's going to be a couple of us in that.
Well, if we go with chain line, it could probably definitely, it will definitely come out there.
Right, so it's just a little bit of concrete and a few of the things, and the rest of it is just really...
And, and, and when I'm gone, you know, I'm pushing up, no, I'm going to be pushing up there.
We'll, we'll put you right over there.
We're going to wrinkle you on the garden. No, 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 I'm going to the university. But when I'm gone, you all can gussy it up, it's all, all that wild crazy stuff, but...
You want it practical, right?
You know, right now, we, we just, you know, we want to grow.
Uh, we can walk with that, can we? Uh, but we're going to leave it alone. All right, so thank you, Dan.
You're pleasing a lot of people, you're giving them an out.
Well, there are two, two reasons for this, is, it's not on here, but I'm going to bring it up, um, just, just simply because we got a, a second.[1740.62] Well, there are two, two reasons for this is, um, it's not on here, but I'm gonna bring it up, um, just, just simply cause we got a, a second. Um, y'all can envision the, the, the train area, the parking deck, the little loop, right? Dorothy's garden, which used to be grass, right? And you see all that. Now, we, 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 we run into a number of people, including some people that came out here for the, the city, um, Christmas party, uh, Christmas event. Um, that operates some pretty cool food trucks, right? And there, there's some food court, food truck options in certain cities, Duluth and some others, and they do it like once a week or seven along those lines. So now you go out there and you say, how can I, how can I engage that crowd so that if they do really well, they wanna locate a business here? Like an incubator opportunity where they're pulling up a food truck now. So the idea was to use that circle, charge them, say seventy-five dollars for that ability. Let's say we have ten food trucks. I don't know if we get that many delicious, say we get ten. Depends on what kinda crowd we pull up. All we're trying to do is, is build some opportunity and most of the, the price per ticket is relatively small. In other words, it's something university students can afford. It's something the reasonable people would, would pull up to. And you saw the taco truck and the different things. Um, we want to implement that. And the, the idea to implement it is just about the same time you're out. So we're not playing with the garden, right? So think three months, right? So it's a concept. So let's start with the concept first in terms of a discussion. And what are your potential challenges? All we're, we're not trying to make money here. We're trying to spend the money on, like I've worked on, um, the ability to clean it up, right? So that we can pay some people to clean up the messes there and have we make it look good. At the same time, we're trying to drive some additional business to the city, um, and ask customers, clients, what are, um, thoughts?
Um, sounds good to me.
Ms. Knight?
Yeah, I mean, we've had plenty of conversations about food trucks, food truck festivals, food festivals, um, you know. So, I mean, it's, it's in line with conversations that have been had in the past.
Well, and immediately, it can be implemented fairly quickly.
And we need them to park in the parking deck.
No, we might, uh, maybe you that's gonna service it, we can either park on the road, but the trucks parking in the loop.
No, no, no. I mean, the people who are going to visit the trucks.
Yes.
They could park in the parking.
If, if, if they're that successful, I mean, ideally, there's plenty of parking over there, but if they're, if they're parking in the parking deck on top of that, that's a crowd.
The trucks are on the street.
And would we, and, and Councilwoman Knight and I were talking about this a little bit yesterday when I had talked about, about it. Would we want to set it up like, um, like maybe putting some Edison lights on the perimeter and a sign? So even when the food trucks aren't there, it's, it's a marker that says, meet us here every Friday from da, 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 for food truck festival or whatever. So that people, even on the days the trucks aren't there, they see the little piece of energy and they're gonna wanna come back for it, maybe?
Yeah, I think you gotta come up with something that works on a marketing standpoint. I don't see any reason. And, and while I'm thinking about that, I'm changing back to the original subject. Once we get, um, this, we have to have copy to put on. So over the next four weeks, we don't wanna just wake up and realize we now have a digital sign, but we don't have anything to say.
Oh, yeah, that won't be.
Figure out what we need to say.
And you intend to host messages for local businesses for free on that, right?
To start with.
Yes.
But later, I think we should.
Some, they may not respect it if we don't give them some of them.
Well, Chris thinks it should be a picture of you waving to everybody. He's sending a tag. We need to have a picture of John waving to everybody. Great.
They're gonna think I'm saying goodbye.
So you can do this.
I do wanna ask the question.
Sure.
I do wanna ask the question, um, is this, uh, we've had food truck, um, events in the city before and there are other cities, you know, right next to us that do regular food truck events. You had mentioned before, are you saying that this is a ticketed event? Or are you saying that we are providing the space, collecting a fee and, and allowing it to happen or?
It's the latter. It's the latter. Trying to be as user-friendly as humanly possible. With the theory being at some point, let's assume we have more food trucks that want in that is theirs. So at some point, maybe we can, you, you, you hope the private market says, if your food isn't any good, you're not gonna come back, cause you're not making any money. Barbecue guy or the taco guy doesn't seem to have that problem. Um, and I, what, what was the name of the, the barbecue folks that?
Magnolia, he's, uh, from Alabama.
Yeah, like Magnolia Barbecue, A T O. I mean, there's, there's a lot of food trucks. I've, I go to quite a few food truck events. That's why I said this, this really is a. I'm glad it's a reinvigorated conversation, cause it's not a new conversation, but, you know, there are a lot of food trucks, but I'm just wanting to be clear on the concept.
Yeah, the concept's a lot, just, just get out of there.
It being space provided rather than, you know, and we've talked about food festivals as well. I mean, you know, there's always an opportunity for that, but, um, just wanting to be clear.
Yeah, I think a festival I'd argue at, at, at the district, but for this one, just simply cause it's almost set up for it. You know, you could cut off the two edges of a horseshoe and everybody just to walk around in the middle and you gotta park on the exterior, easy to do, relatively easy to maintain and clean up. And we start to just, you know, drive some business of it.
Will this be like the lunchtime or evening or just what?
We don't know too gentleman about that as to what was the best times. In other words, the food truck people themselves saying what works. Um, and, you know, we're talking about.
He currently sets up in a forest park now. He's the only food truck guy there. And he said he does well on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, um, between noon to, yeah, noon to five P M.
So we just give him a Saturday, cause everybody's a little bit more out on Saturday and then just let him have it. And if it starts to gain some traction, you know, maybe we can go and get a starving artist to play something, you know, in the swing right there.
Yeah, yeah.
And as long as we're covering that, we're not trying to lose any money, but, you know, let's, let's see what happens. But, but it's, the, the difference is.
Yeah, a DJ is easy. A DJ is almost very easy.
Yeah.
Or, or get, like you said, the Clayton, uh, Clayton State University students that's in the music or whatever, you know, they like to come out and see what we think of their talents, you know, they.
So we, we.
Horns or guitars.
But it's, um, taking it back from just a discussion.
Can we buy some seats?
And, and. Buy some what?
Now, you, you, I know, but you start to get into something labor intense.
I know, but like if I, if I, imagine if I'm gonna, if I being the city at large, we were gonna set it up to have every Saturday from noon to five. Um, and we had some maybe strung lights and, and a sign. Don't you want like even a few tables and chairs, like picnic tables?
I'll start to get into the chastain thing. I don't know. Yeah, I think to start with, let's just see if we can make something happen.
So wait till it becomes popular enough to have seats before we buy.
Then let's see what the market brings, you know, cause every time we're pulling that from somewhere, it's gotta come from somewhere. It's a, it's a nightmare. We don't come from a store.
Sometimes have.
Well, no, but we try and work with other, other bench outs for an, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, yeah, I guess it makes sense.
The great thing about this phase, we've got benches around, in that area, so we can take it better.
And the walls and different things like that, yeah.
Bike racks.
So let's, let's see what the needs.
And they can always bring their own chair.
We know we have some electrical out there. They might appreciate what certain means, but, but it's, this, this, first is do it, right? It's, it's, we, we, we may go, we get Dorothy out of there about the same time you implement it.
But I, I, I mean, it, it.
Where are they?
It wouldn't take three months to get this done. So are you saying you wanna time it?
I, I don't wanna be over there at the same time Dorothy's.
While the garden is still there, gotcha.
So as we wanna say, I wanna see some sod and I want, uh, the spring would be nice.
Oh, wait. I'm getting the wrong place. You're talking about within the L C I?
Yes.
Not the auto shops?
No.
Oh, okay.
Talking about.
You said the old term. I'm like, duh. You said the circle. I was like, oh, right, yeah, okay.
There it is. And it's all built in already and it's all very dispatched and, you know, implement. And if we're gonna have to have a budget to go with it, tell us what that is and we'll, we'll probably cover that out of that same hotel motel thought process. Cause it's, it's pulling something. It shouldn't be that expensive. Um.
Product development, yeah. Signage and creating an, an environment for tourism. Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
So where, where's the app at for the city?
The app, uh, today they, uh, they started their, their final phase, so they, they developing the app.
No, they sent us the invoice that we have to pay and then they'll start the final phase. I just don't want to misrepresent it. Yeah, yeah.
Well, people should be paid for the work they do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all good. Um, which, then we do the next part. So the, the billboard folks, I, I think you, everybody saw the email, right?
Is, uh, they're ballooning the site, so they, uh, testing the soil now and then they have the forest guy come out to make sure that the trees can be cleared, so.
Okay, and in the email, it said something about the trees were creating a problem. Was that just a visual?
Yeah, so they couldn't physically do it there, but they're doing it remotely through satellite.
Okay, so it's not the issue with the visibility. It's just they couldn't walk in and get the balloon to flip the way it was supposed to or something? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, so they couldn't access it, so they, they using, uh, they hired a guy that they deal with to do it using satellite technology, uh, like Google map. So they're able to access the, the site.
So now, okay, that's fine. And then.
AKA Google, they're finishing their Google map for G dot. They should be out here next week if the mangoes is planted.
Oh, sweet.
Yeah.
Tell us, tell us.
I don't know if you've been out there, but.
Is that the, the billboard sign going up or what?
No, it's, well, we gotta do there, on the other side, we want them to tell us exactly the dominant ground that they're going to use. And then we're gonna come in with a survey around it and then we're gonna ask y'all to rezone that little surveyed section to BG so that they can put the sign on.
Wasn't there an issue about the stability of it?
Well, that's what you do, soil testing.
They did it? Have they done it?
Uh, they're in the process of doing it.
That's what they're doing.
Yeah, we have to know where it's going before we know what soil test.
Rather than us tell them, we want them to tell us. And then you go, okay, you picked a spot. Now, we're gonna make this happen. Um, and that should take tremendously long period of time. Now, tell us a little bit more about the, the G dot permit.
Okay, so, um, the last conversation I had with G dot regarding permit, we are just a blink of an eye from getting the last piece of correspondence that they need, which is AKA has to provide them with an aerial view from a satellite that shows the location of where they think they're gonna.
As the company was just talking about with Google and.
Right. So I'll get that from them. They were out of their office for the holidays and vacations. They're back. I should get that this week. Once I turn that over to G dot, our permit is in our hand and we can start.
Well, they'll have to prove it.
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll approve it. He said that that's all he needed and that would be the proof. They'll start picking trees, uh, and removing trees out of that area. And we're still out there cutting away, so if you get a chance to go out and see, we've done quite a bit more. Uh, and we plan to go out every day, cut more until we get it all down. And plan B is, uh, to take something and just grind everything up that's on the ground and make it look pretty and keep it moving.
A lot of sight with the satellite is very cool. That's just reality. Um, if, if we really get everything that we think we're gonna get, this will have not been done probably since the seventies? I guess when, when the mall would go the first time?
Yeah, and, and just, you know, to the mayor's point, just remember, there is no business that we haven't spoken to in the six years I've been here as city manager that hasn't talked about visibility from the interstate. So it is so much bigger than any one development or any one business.
Well, and one of the, in the event that we're fortunate enough for the school system and the county to talk about, you know, cause they're, they're working, they're having discussions with the seeders property about putting that civic center. We know that for sure. All right. Now, I don't know if they'll be successful or not, but the point being is visibility, I think, really adds to our potential to be able to pull it off. Cause now that they can see it for themselves, right? So that, you know, we're, it's, it's years worth of work, you know, walking around and not getting much, but we can pull it off.
We're gonna pull it off, Chief.
You know, they, they don't have to be in a hurry. There's still some discussion, so we can say, you know, we're close, we're close.
Well, and the great thing about it is the way we're handling the trees that we're taking down ourselves, um, it's, it's a benefit for us because it gives us the respect of what we have to do going forward to maintain that. We're gonna treat that like a part. And we're gonna make sure the beds.
To your point, do you wanna talk about, is, would the council be agreeable for us to, in some way, chain off the entrance? Uh, because we're having people that are coming at night, like spinning donuts in the grass. Something that if it's a park that we close in the evening and reopen every morning, um, I mean, how do you feel about that?
I don't know that I believe. I mean, first it's, we basically destroyed it for years. Now we got at least, um, security out there, like, um, cameras. Um, it, it's not gonna be too much longer before we get somebody who has an interest in one of those pieces. You know, the gentleman today had a real interest, but, you know, we need to go talk to his wife. And, and you go, okay, cause you can't go to the next level until you get an, an idea. Um, and I think that changes things. You know, if you get a real player who wants that at a restaurant like that, 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 that changes things pretty quickly.
Chief, uh, this is just a temporary opening, closing up park. It's not a permanent scenario. What I wanna do is, once we get our, the, the work started that we need on that greenhouse, I don't want anyone coming out there in the middle of the night just tampering with stuff. So I thought, if I could just put a baller that made out of a couple of posts and a chain and then close it off at night so cars couldn't drive through and unchain it in the morning before everyone gets there.
That's fine. Uh, there used to be one out there used, yeah, uh, like before it crossed concrete, uh, storage system.
Yeah, and then once we get it finished, it disappears and everything is lit up nicely and it's, you know, I just wanted to take a few safety precautions.
Yeah, and it's needed backstage, so that's, um, give us a little bit of an update on our sidewalk. We still talking?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, uh, Val and I actually walked, uh, the neighborhood of Lake Harbor and visited with each of the residents there. And for the most part, everyone is in agreement that, uh, they'd love to have that sidewalk. We only had, uh, a couple of persons that had a few concerns, but they're not concerns that we can't work through. Um, the attorney is working on a waiver that we can get our hands on and we can go back to the residents now that we've introduced ourselves. We think if the waivers.
And we just got an update from the attorney this, that last week, I guess it was.
Yes.
Um, so, you know, it is to, to Billy's point, um, it's, it's the waiver that has to go to all the homeowners, not, not anybody who's just occupying. But I would like to ask, so remember the lady who had the three crepe myrtle type trees in her front yard? I mean, is anybody ever proud of us going ahead and getting those down?
She, she's got two old, she's got four old trees that over time weather has played a factor in, in killing and damaging those trees extremely bad. Um, they need to come down. We could take a chainsaw over there and zip them down in a matter of minutes and throw them on the.
That's what's gonna make her happy and sign her release.
But maybe, then I think, maybe we should get her to sign it at the same time.
Well, I, I, you know, that's, that, I was thinking that, I was thinking that, that's.
Little trade.
Yeah, little trade. I'll, you sign, I'll cut. And once you're finished, I'll be finished and we'll be finished.
Alternatives.
Yes. But yes, I'll, I, we'll, it's coming off pretty good.
What, what about the, uh, sinking in the past? Does somebody reach any comments on that?
Yes, sir. So, so, um, Triscape and C S M. C S, C S M is the contractor that Triscape and Mark Willey is working with to do the soil sample. In order to do the soil, soil sample, they had to literally move, remove all the equipment and there was a pile of dirt right there by the bridge. That has to be removed because that's where they need to do the soil samples. They're gonna start coring later this week and by next week, they'll have a better understanding of the testing results for that soil. Um, they think it's gonna be about four hundred foot worth of, uh, space that will possibly need to raise the bridge. But once we get the results back from the soil sample, we can see forward with coming up with a game plan, uh, whether we, how do we go up about a change order of roughly about ninety-two thousand dollars, possibly a little bit more.
Is that wooden bridge or wood?
Depending, I mean.
Depends on the soil sample.
Depends on what the soil sample.
The type of bridge.
Well, if, or if a bridge is gonna be required. I, I, I'll be honest with you, I can't imagine how it's not going to be. The very fact that we need to do this and they said if we hadn't the, the cement, twelve-foot cement path would have washed away kinda tells us that it's not, you know, we've had nothing but trouble with that, that system. Every time we wanted rock, there wasn't. Every time we didn't want rock, there was. So I'm sure it's gonna be an expensive fix.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll have. No, we're still getting a large amount of money from somebody else, so, yeah. Okay?
Yeah.
That's it?
All right. Um, we, we talked earlier, and this was earlier in the year, that, you know, about city parks, each one of the parks getting set up for evaluation and to make sure that, you know, we, we applied everything and made each one whole, fixed, cleaned, how everyone said.
We, we're working on, Mr. Mayor, I, I'll be perfectly honest. It's, uh, on my list. I have some ideas of some modifications to all of the parts. Uh, and some of it is, just some of the equipment is, it's, it's aged and it needs to be replaced. I'll have a list pulled together by the next council session.
Don't say that. Yeah, I'm telling you more.
City manager. I'll get a list of city manager.
It, it's gonna be tough to get me a list, a completed list by then, but, and because remember too, part of, of another assessment that the, we had talked about was the energy for the buildings.
Right.
Yeah, so we just, we just don't wanna overpromise what we can do in the next two weeks.
Correct. Well, not in the next two weeks, but I'll get something as quick. I've been working on the energy savings, um, document for, off and on for the last two and a half months. I'm just about finished, so I just need to get a summary sheet pulled together that pretty much identifies what needs to be done at each of the locations. So I'll get that to, to you guys as quick as possible.
Okay. Then, then let me throw one more that's out on the list. Ah, yeah. All right. So we, we go through the Christmas at the city, okay? And we, and I'm just kinda pulling back years ago to now. Now, years and years ago, the city did absolutely nothing, all right? Then we decided that wasn't a good thing for businesses or otherwise. In other words, if you went to Alamo or something else, you saw a really nice business setting, you know, some. Then we decided that wasn't a good thing for businesses or otherwise. In other words, if you went to Alamo or something else, you saw a really nice business setting, you know, some Christmas settings and things like that. So if we get some things at City Hall, but the Christmas ornaments that were hanging up and down the road, having two between here and the end of Phillips Drive is probably a little, a little minimalistic, okay? In other words, the program that was in place is obviously been abandoned. Then what do we have? And I'm not saying let's go out there and just fix junk. I'm, I'm worried too, let's plan for tomorrow. And because now we have eleven months to do it, ten, uh, come up with a strategy that says, here's, here's what we're gonna do to fix it. Now, in past times, we would buy like ten thousand dollars worth of Christmas decorations, whatever you wanna call that. And then we would slowly but surely expand it out and the older ones got moved into the ancillary sections. We, we can't have very many good ones because there wasn't that many good ones hanging up on the pump. I don't think much about that, about any of them, right? And you go, well, then that's abandoned, right? We've abandoned that plan. So if we've got stuff out there, it's just taking up warehouse space for no reason, let's answer that question. Then let's come up with a plan that says, what would, what would, what would, what would putting that concept back in play cost as a totality? And then let's assume that we're gonna take it apart in increments for, for financing. So let's say we got a splash project out there, the new one, we have that, we got ten months. If we're gonna go out there and buy new ones, a couple of things first is, what would that theoretically cost us? So just put it back the way it was, right? Is, if that's too much at one time, then just come up with a multi-year approach that said, okay, I'll, I'll buy, I'll splash, I'll buy twenty-five thousand. I don't know what it would look. That's the idea first. Then the second one would be, what do they look like, right? That's getting with the different magazines and you hand the stuff out to the city council and say, okay, these are the new ones, what is, what do you want, okay? So let's put that on the table and have a discussion about it.
It's like we talked about, Billy. Part of the thing is taking stock in what we have.
Great.
What is usable, what is not junk, as the mayor said. What do we own already and what, you know, you know, literally count poles and where we wanna see them and what roads we want them on? And, because we're gonna have to have a count of any real cost estimate, which we knew that was gonna be part of the supervisor's thing to do in January, so.
But what we just did was unacceptable. We, we have to live through it fine, but unacceptable. So now we need a, a plan going forward. Thoughts, Tony? This is time to talk about it.
So, um. I'm, uh. Right now, I'm just kinda like.
Okay. Ms. Knight, thoughts? I mean, we're a long ways away from pulling trigger. We're just trying to move the process down there and say, initial conversation, thoughts, and what do we think?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm reading through some material and, and thrown off a little bit. Um, you have to forgive me. The topic we have moved on to.
Christmas lights.
Mistake that, please.
It's, it's Christmas lights, you know, where they have the, the different lights that are on each one of the utility poles as you drive through the city. It, it used to be pretty much all of Fifty-four Highway, Lake Harbor and Mar-a-Rua are a pretty good bit, Phillips Drive and then Mount Zion. And if you looked at the ones we actually had in place this year, you might have had three between this building and your house, you know, in, in terms of that side. A, a, a reasonable number, being kind, on Fifty-four. And then I think we've pretty much abandoned Mount Zion. Um, the idea is.
Morrow Road?
Morrow had like the seven, it was like two, uh, millimeter minute. Um, so then you just say, we don't have them because the ones we did have didn't work. And then we didn't have enough time to really get into the fix method. So then you're just going, but either way, we'd still be fixing stuff that was at least ten to twelve years old. And you go, okay. You know, we've been changing lights and we're putting LEDs in, pretty much LEDs is what they sell today. So let's not spend a tremendous amount of staff time on rehabilitating fifteen-year-old product or stuff that we obviously weren't comfortable enough to put up in the first place. Then you go, so then let's replace it. And we can get into what they look like. We got magazines that'll give us all that long.
Oh, yeah.
But the first thing is to kinda get an idea of what it would cost, how we.
I, I mean, from my understanding, within the last two years, we bought new lights or lighting types, um, so I mean, you know.
For City Hall.
I, I think those were the. For so long until they.
Yeah, I think those were the ones at City Hall. So City Hall itself definitely had some stuff, but as far as out there in the business community, kinda saying welcome to Christmas kind of thing?
Yeah, we, it was pretty bad. Just kinda chiming in, we, we have a lot of different types of pole attachment lights. But, I mean, this year alone, I took about eight boxes of a hundred and fifty bulbs and actually removed regular bulbs and put LED bulbs in fixtures just to get them up this year. They're starting to show a little wear and tear and I concur one hundred percent, we're at the point where we need to, to look at getting some replacement decoration for the poles. So I'll go ahead and do some more counting and clean up some other stuff and it's gonna be a dumpster full. I'll be perfectly honest because, because of some other issues that pertain to the warehouse and, uh, that city manager and I are talking about that we're working on to get that cleaned up, but nevertheless.
Well, I, I don't wanna do halfway job when we find junk and we put it up on the pole and then it doesn't work.
That, that's.
But, but I, to Billy's point is, the part of the equation and one of the additions that I forgot to mention about the job description is, somebody has to be sort of overseeing the storage. So i- it's like we shouldn't be losing inventory from year to year because things weren't stored properly. And that's just not a program that we've ever had in place. Um, but I mean, well, I shouldn't say ever, uh, you may have had one, but that's one of the things we, we, because if we're buying new stuff, we need to store it correctly, so the, the shelf life is expanded.
Oh, I see. And, and so that was a huge concern that I had when I first looked into, in that building. I said, you gotta be kidding me. How did you get all this stuff in here? And I've got so many different stories and it didn't make any sense, but nevertheless, we started clearing crates off, looking at what's in the crates. Some of it we can reuse. Uh, some of it is completely shot because it's been sitting in crates for quite some time and heat and cool and some of the stuff is broken and. But we have started that process and that journey and we realized that we need to get additional pole ornaments. And, and what I envisioned is selecting five or six different ornaments that we could attach to poles and taking directives from the area council and, hey, they're, these are the ones we want and this is what it's gonna cost. And how long will it take to get it in? And then creating a nice storage staging area so that each year it's put back in a way that it's not damaged and you pull it right back out the next year, you plug it in and you keep going.
Sweet.
So I've got a plan.
All right. Um, we, we, obviously we'll come up with a plan first and we'll put that for there. Uh, Ms. Tran, comments?
So, Carmen, let's see how, uh, yeah, let's, uh, let's see, we just got a plan and, and then we figure out how much would this cost, if that's be affordable and, and what should we do next?
Go on.
All right.
Um, but I do have a comment. I'm asking for a couple of minutes before we shut.
Go ahead.
I wanna say that, um, one of those reasons that, uh, you know, I, I get into the office is I see the city, it has so many facility that. I wouldn't, I wanna call it abandoned, but, you know, we never, we never take care of, we never use it. And we never bothered to, to think what we're gonna do about those places. Like Moro Center, Old Town Moro, we can go on and go on. And I see people pick and choose and treat, you know, places that, you know, they like to and treat, treat all the places like Stepchild and things like that. But at the end of the day, I would think it's all city property. It's not mine or y'all or anybody near on it. It's city. So we, I mean, we, for example, see, I mean, Old Town Moro. We need to ask ourselves, what are we gonna do about it? We gonna burn it down? Are we gonna fix it to make it work or however it is? We need to determine what we're gonna do for, for, for that place, uh, the Backspace, uh, the Conference Center, uh, you know, those, all the places that we're gonna, are we gonna develop them or? I mean, what exactly what we're gonna do about those? And then we're gonna have a one-year plan, two-year plan, five-year plan for those places. And we just can't just sit there and don't bother to look at it and every time we try to do something about it or whatever, we're gonna hit a wall here and there. And I'm not, I'm just asking everybody to think for yourself and what you really wanna do on each of those places. Because I'm a business guy. I'm, I'm seeing it as a business. I mean, I, you know, city needs money to operate. Um, I'm totally against the, you know, trying to raise revenue by raising taxes or whatever it is. I, I'd like to bring more business to those places as much as we can so we can make more money to pay our citizens better. Or to, you know, to operate our ci- uh, city better. That's how I see it. And I don't know. I think it's the way it should be, but, uh, and one of those reasons I, I, you know, I get into the office for. So I'm, 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 I'm asking everybody to really think, to consider, uh, put everything in con- the consideration that, you know, what we're gonna do about City Moro, what, I mean, Old Town Moro. I mean, we can create like a, I mean, not, 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 not only that. Only, but everything else here, we have a lot of room to grow and the city, uh, has, to me, is, has a big potential. I mean, we, we get to the bottom, so we have a lot of room to grow. And it's, it just, it's just one of those things that, um. You know, we, uh, it's not that us, y'all and I or whoever it is, the team, behind the team, we had this, the, the scene that trying to bring business in. And it's not that we're hiding from nobody or anything like that, but everybody, welcome to come to the city on every Tuesday or whatever to meet with the business people. We, we try to bring as many business to the city as we can, but the way it is, we need to rest it up a little bit to be more presentable, to, to not to scare people away. That's all I'm asking. I mean, I'm, 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 I'm not asking that you got to tell me whatever, but just please, uh, give all the property in the city, that this, our property, a fair consideration. Thank you.
All right. Um, the, the marketing contract, uh, with the DMO, that, that should be almost ready to finalize, right?
You, you're, at the next meeting, you'll see the agreement.
Okay. Does anybody, in its current form, still have any issues with it? Because it's not a long passive.
Now, and, and you say marketing, you just mean the agreement between the city and the DMO?
Well, that is, yes.
Okay.
I mean, we want our side to sign it. All we do is when the DMO finally meets for the first time, I'll go, you need to sign this.
Yeah. So we passed the, the joint letter tonight, um, and because it has to happen in this, in the right order. So at the next meeting, you will see, hopefully, she'll have it to me this week, um, you'll see the, on the agenda with your approval, the approval of the, the actual agreement between the DMOS.
That's important. And again, we could talk about this stuff to death, you know, that the agreement is just an operating document. You hope, hope you never have to go back to. The idea that we got a business community out there, we need to invite a pack to the table, that's gonna take them in. And then we want them to participate so that some of the different things that we're doing, whether it's, uh, uh, as a matter of fact, we were talking about the Fishers and Men, you know, we, we ended strongly. We need to coordinate on the Juneteenth event. That was their market. They were very much into that. Um, but right now, we're not coordinating too much with any business, you know, and that's just got to change. So we're, we're sitting on G. We're waiting for, no, in this case, we're waiting on the attorney, but, you know, I, I don't want a scenario that we get here and then everybody wants to punt. We gotta punt, let's punt right now. We got two weeks and to say, what's the issue? What, you know, if there's some wording that somebody doesn't like, I didn't write it, the city attorney wrote it. But let's, let's make sure we did that. So any questions on that? Mr. Worthen?
Well, my comments were, you know, like I said, the, um, I just go back to a scenario where we had, um, Lake City and City Moro. And, uh, it was a nine-one-one issue and there was a conflict there and we lost that.
One, one is, that was related to, um, the, the, the DMO and the city council or the city attorney representing both parties. This one is the actual marketing agreement.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm just saying.
And in a way, I don't wanna say this the wrong way, you, you're, you're gonna have some pretty tremendous influence by basically saying, I'm gonna do a Juneteenth event. That's us teeing it up and then telling them if they wanna do business partnerships and sponsorships, whether that's in addition to, out of replacement. It just works out, so.
Well, and, and just, I mean, the, I, I encourage the council to remember, you're collecting a tax, you have to have a DMO. That, it, it, you, you don't get.
Well, I understand because.
We haven't had one and we've got all these months of.
We've, we've gone through ups and downs with DMOS, okay? So, I'm just saying.
Don't get your.
I'm just saying, if we can't get it right, let's not continue with the way things have been going. Let's just make sure that it's right. Let's make sure we're doing, being fair for, for the citizens' sake, because after all, it's affecting them, what happens, the decisions we make. And, and the citizens have gone through a lot. I speak with them and they're like, you know, when are they ever gonna get it right? So just make sure we're getting it right is, is, is what I'm, my concern is, so.
Well, your verse is your base and we, we don't have options. I believe. And the, the next one is dealing with your business community. And they're no different than dealing with your citizens. Each one's gonna be slightly different. Some rational, some irrational, some are gonna want everything for themselves and some want nothing, just to be left alone. Some, we would assume they want, you know, or would like to help, and they won't. Others, maybe not. But I tell you what, until we walk through that path, we won't know what issues to solve. So we've teed up an economic development team. We've, we've got the ability. We're, we're gaining some traction, um, you know, meeting with Lowe's outlet today. Turns out that gentleman was the manager of the Walmart here from 'oh seven to 'ten and he was pretty jazzed, um, by what the conversations he was having today. He likes to be intact. Uh, this is the only one with the exception of Miami, I believe. They got three up and running, right? So they've got one in, I think, upstate.
Chicago.
Chicago.
Boston.
They've got one in Miami and one in good old-fashioned Morrow, Georgia. So that is not bad. And, and that's where you just gotta keep laying that, that number out there that says, we're open for business, we're open for business, we're open for business. And it's, even if it happens by sheer luck, does it really matter, right? They're open. Somebody else, you know, we, we go lay them out there and we say, that's a good brand. You, you all signed the NDA the other day and that's a pretty cool little brand, right? So, you know, when you, when you get the traction, don't, don't lose sight of it. We, we got a lot more work to do and it'll be, you know, a lot of, of, you know.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm all for growth, but I just, um, you know, I, I really wanna see it stick.
Well, I, I promise you that doing nothing isn't going to get us anywhere.
I understand that.
And that's a negative.
I know, I understand that, I understand that.
I, I can't promise by any stretch that miracles will happen. I just know the alternative is worse. So, you know, just, just be aware of it. All right. Um, kinda catching a couple of things that I know is running that, there are another challenges.
I have a, I have a question here.
Chief.
Um, these events, they are being planned.
Yes.
Then you mentioned something about sponsorship.
Didn't you mention something about sponsorships?
Yes.
And that's not on here anywhere?
The sponsorships that you're talking about is when somebody goes out and works with us to create a sponsorship. And that's just part of it. Does that make sense?
So do we have an agreement with them, or how does that work?
With who? I'm sorry.
Well, in this particular case, if you're talking about Lunar New Year, for example.
We don't need an agreement.
We had some discussions about that. So the theory is an idea, because it's partially your program. And it says, do you have a problem with them being able to go out there and raise money in the private sector? If I can't go to 12, if I go to pursue this business and I say, and I can give you a $10,000 sponsorship, and here's what I give you for it. To be honest, it's that money applying to your event which makes your event hopefully better and bigger.
So how is that gonna work? Are we gonna, like, have an agreement for that?
It's not gonna be necessary. From a more understanding, it's a concept. In other words, we already have kind of what the sponsorship is worth. I think that might be where you're at. Silver level, lead level, all these other things, do you have that? Do you have that available to the city council?
I can send it over.
But I do wanna clarify, so as an event, like Lunar New Year, because it's, we're on the eve of it, you, we are, the DMO will fund the event. The sponsorships are over and above that to accentuate things. Like, let's say if you say, I'm gonna do five things with the event money, but I'm gonna go get sponsorships, and now I can have 20 things. So that no matter, if nobody sponsors anything, we're still gonna have a strong event. The sponsorships just enrich it. And so because of the, because sponsorships, we're just serving as sort of a pastor agency where we get the sponsorship and it goes to the people who are doing the event for us.
But if you want to know what it is, we do not own pocket. And basically, I assume they have it, but I...
The concept, yeah. The sponsorship levels.
Yeah. And some of the sponsorship levels, to be honest, it's a little impractical. In other words, we have one that's like $20,000 worth of money. Do I think, at the event with the COVID year, somebody's gonna be able to raise a $20,000 sponsorship? As we have it right now, I would say, sure, if you saw, you could do that.
We'll see.
But if I was paying my own pocket, I would say that smaller level sponsorships probably have a lot of wings. The bigger ones, sure. I mean, if somebody else tells you they can do it, who am I to tell you that you can't? You know?
And so it benefits us?
Yes.
Because it, well, I think it adds more depth to your event, you know?
I give more, this is assuming, I'd say Mercedes to sponsor our event. So Lunar New Year sponsored by Mercedes, that's a pretty good one. You put another $20,000 on this same event, that might be in terms of prizes and different things that you could give out to make the event a better...
And if the events become more well-known, or, you know, whether it's Day of the Dead, Juneteenth, Lunar New Year, and let's say somebody wants to sponsor the fireworks at Freedom Fest, they're gonna pay the $10,000 so it's not coming out of our pocket. But, you know, we're not there yet.
So it's training moves, but not bad, in these terms of paper. So we'll get to that. In terms of each one of the particular...
So this is a conversation that was had. Is there a document floating around that hasn't been shared with all the council? Like, I know this has, the DMO, we're speaking about getting sponsors, but are we reinvigorating a conversation? Is it changed? Where is this coming from?
No, this one's just coming from the event itself and being able to push forward on a sponsorship plan. And there is a document out there that if you wanted to sponsor part of Lunar New Year, whether it's one of the vignettes or something, this is what you can get.
Or any other event as well, I mean...
Well, in this particular case, that we're focusing on, the warmth is coming up. We could use that document to be able to...
The staff is not doing it. So whoever's hired, so like, for Day of the Dead, it'd be Antonio Rodriguez, right? So it's the people who are planning the event that are facilitating the sponsorship.
Absolutely.
So Cinco de Mayo, is that gonna be one of our events?
Right now, this is basically, the guy who did Day of the Dead, the lap chamber of cards, just wants to be able to utilize the space and use Cinco de Mayo. It's totally out of them. All we're doing is allowing them to use the facility.
Yeah, we're not paying for it, we're not staffing it. Now, and he may ask to have an officer there, pay an officer to be there, you know, for security.
Public works, that kind of stuff.
Clean out?
But it's not. We're not spending 30 grand to help you Cinco de Mayo. That's on there.
So they owe, all their liabilities and everything.
And then on the Juneteenth thing, you know more about that than I do, I don't know where you're over there.
I think we're, Councilwoman Knight sent out an email about getting another meeting together to sort of figure out, you know, what steps are being taken.
Well, we did have some feedback from the coordinator. She just kind of pulled things together that we had spoken about. And I think they were reaching out to the different people to see what was available and who was available and whatever, so we should be meeting.
Yeah, she's making contact with, you know, there's a component of, like a medical fair, kind of like the BPSOS, but cater towards a different community. She's trying to make contact with that, and she's also reached out to, we gave her some suggestions. In addition to bands, we gave her some suggestions for a run of show. There are some school groups that are very popular, and she says she's reached out to Singing Brothers of Stillwell, they're a phenomenal group. Just trying to kind of line up performers for that deck.
And you've seen some of the advertising that's now, there's a lot of it, different forms. I think some of the latest stuff they put out was actually pretty short, looked pretty good. So, and some of it I can't read, but people who can said it looked pretty short. Then let's start with this one, because I know we got a lot of different things we're... I think we're gonna have reasons soon. The Urban redevelopment authority is gonna have a meeting, and they're gonna be talking about the possible refunding of the earnings money deposit. And that should be kind of, that will ask me. We know that these two members of that authority have a, their term has expired. I'm likely to put forward an individual, and that would be Nancy Hardest, to, a full term, to be governor of the next council meeting, to replace an expired term of Mr. Watkins, super nice guy. I think it kind of changes where we start the head of direction, and a lot of different discussions. I think that's a good idea. I talked to Miss Hardest, she's agreed a while back. But I would look forward to putting that on the agenda as the next one. I think you're, Dorothy, that's your neighbor, I'll just give you a little bit of an idea of who she is. She's in the audience today, she's a longtime member of the City of Moro. She was a former bookkeeper for one of the little elementary schools here for years. She's pretty sharp. She doesn't get mull over pretty easy. In other words, you're gonna have to make your case in an area where we're doing economic development ideas. And we're gonna need this. So we need sharp people. And I like Merp, you know? Rather than make an additional appointment for a number of years, then I'm not sure if it'd be most productive. That would be my recommendation. And we have a number of appointments to the Planning and Zoning Board. Most of those have expired. I will make a recommendation for Ms. McDonald to replace Joyce Bean. Joyce is also a wonderful individual, she's got some health issues. I know she doesn't wanna feel put out, and she's done a great job for the city. And we appreciate her time and effort, but that would be one recommendation. A second recommendation for another portion that's open on that board would be a lady named Claire Van. She's also been active on a number of different things with the city, so most people should know her.
I think she worked the blood draw, one of the blood draws.
Yeah, she was on board, so, again, you know, a longtime person in the city, she's Laotian. And she was a business owner here. She's also pretty tough, and, you know, as a business owner, certainly understands how the city makes money. So those would be two. And expired terms of the current chairman, an expired term of Mr. Joyce Bean. Then we would leave pending Wayne Tannen.
Mr. Mullins.
Mr. Mullins. All of those terms at some point expire, but they stay relevant as long as a replacement hasn't been made for you. Once there's a deciding, then we can't have a Planning and Zoning Board that just sits there. I mean, I'm not picking fights with anybody, I'm just simply going, the city's got it moving forward in a lot of different directions. So we only have so much land, we have to look at some of the properties that were purchased. Just sitting on it doesn't do us any good. An example would be property on Addison Park, we had some discussions about that this morning. But, you know, there's some good ideas. And we also have had some people who have an interest in selling their property, and some of the ideas they have are awful. Cheap, multifamily housing, and that's just gonna drive down your property value, my property value. And it's a mess. Is there some stuff out there that makes sense? Yes, there actually is. But we need to show our Planning and Zoning Board what it is that's out there that makes sense. Because we're gonna have to change some rules to be able to allow that product to actually take place. We're gonna have to change some rules to be able to make it so the junk just doesn't show up here. And that allows our economic development team to go out there and pursue the right stuff. But right now, some of what you get doesn't even allow what you really might wanna have. So just like in years past, time to get in the mail. Time to, instead of just talking about it, show it to you. You wanna come, come. You don't wanna come? Not, don't, you know? But from there, we've got to have, it still needs your comprehensive plan, still needs some of your concepts, you know? But it's a big difference between just throwing open the door to the private sector and saying, go get some job, that, you know, two years from now, five years from now, 10 years from now, isn't gonna be valued again. And to be honest, we all shot it down, and people out there who are guarding style apartments in some of these places. And that's what your K says, if you did allow it, that's what they get built. That's garbage, you know? It's, you know, might have been great for 1985, but it hasn't helped the city, it certainly hasn't helped this county. So I think everyone's kind of getting away from it. You're seeing some of the reports that came out recently that said, you know, maybe planning cannabis in February is on 150,000 dollar house. Maybe we ought to be headed a little bit north of that. Why? Tax purposes, school purposes, all the things that matter to us. Easy to say, a little bit harder to do. But we want to go out and pursue people. And right now, your K doesn't keep up with your vision. And I want a Planning and Zoning Board that keeps up with that vision. And a few new plans, a few more plans, that's fine. But if you need to start, look, now you got an economic development team, and you go, that's your job. Find the product, show it. We don't have to waste our time on a consistent basis once they've reached a conclusion of something to happen. Let's see it. Does that make sense? If you wanna go along for the ride, go ahead. But if we do it the right way, each of these organizations should be able to do some of their own stuff and then bring to us their conclusions. That's what we get to decide, right? But by then, a lot of the garbage should have been fed. We don't like this, this is not what we want, this is what we want. So much different than just saying, you know, pretty blue, I'm willing to take mixed use. What is mixed use? What is the exact, what is the criteria? And then what is somebody actually willing to actually put in? I can tell you three floors I want to. And they're not gonna go? So we're just not ready for it. That doesn't mean that we can't be ready, but you're not ready for it now. The dollar's low support. So somewhere in between is what's gonna happen. Is the city ready? I'd like it to be clean, I like a lot of it, you know? But time's up. So plan the hand is dealt. Let's put the people on the ground, and let's make them do their job. So those are the things that you're gonna see coming forward in terms of that. Comments? Mr. Worthy?
I think it's time that we did address some of the issues, things that have not benefited the city and things that have not changed. I think we should look at some things that we need to change. You know, it seems like we're stuck. Some people wanna see us move here and some don't. So I mean, I'm for progressive thinking and moving ahead as long as we just don't throw anybody, throw the baby out with the bath, or, you know, I mean, phases, you know? We just need to kind of phase things, you know?
If you just look at, say, the last year, some things we've not accomplished.
Right.
We've talked about it, it just didn't happen. Some of that's not our fault, some of it is, some of it is just gotta find traction, you know? But in a project management scenario, you look at somebody that ability to go, I want two weeks from now. I have to have, you know? Some things that are more discussion-worthy, Christmas lights or something like that, we've got plenty of time. But the time, if people have a tendency to use the time allotted, and next thing you know, we're sitting there five weeks before Thanksgiving, and we haven't made it to see. Can't do it, you know? We're in park, we can't stay in park. If all like this idea, kill it, let's do something else. But you still have to do something, right? And then, as Qua was saying earlier, with the VAS, this is usually the dark space in example. We should have shopped some of that to different retailers, to be able to see what parts work, what part don't. The lady should give us a floor plan here soon, and we'll have a much better idea of what's available. But if you saw the parking pattern over Christmas, now I tell you what, the retailers over there, they'll be parking in your parking lot every day. And you're like, well, that gives you that storefront retail concept right there. Why can't we use the other side if we're gonna use it as a, so some exhibit space? There's so much of it over there. The idea of us putting it all on player, we wouldn't have the money to do that, you know? So if we can, you know, go to somebody like Bounce, I got a 15,000 square foot corner, play with it, do something with it. Hang a sign on the wall, at least, you know?
But do we have all those issues resolved, you know, as far as in the dark space about how to partial, part, partial out? Well, remember that some of those issues only existed because we weren't at that time talking about maintaining ownership. If we, which is not what the mayor's talking about. If we're gonna own it and lease the space to some combination of people, we won't have to resolve.
Well, the thing of it is, being able to go get the entity, the retailer, this is, this is a great, this idea is good. They're in a 30,000 square foot city. You have 120,000 square feet at a place that does nothing but sell shoes? Pretty much, yeah. So why can't we do that? I'm not saying it'll be successful, but if we don't give our econ team the ability to market what you got, then we're not, it's not listed. And you just gotta say, don't know, but that's moving it forward. And then maybe we knock the planters down in the front, maybe we put a restaurant in the other side. Get it. Coming back full circle. We got two compressors out, a 60-ton system that can't be operating officially. Can't be, right? Our power bill's high, we know that. Okay? I'm a pretty sharp guy when it comes to some of that. I'm just telling you that that's just not every day. You're not gonna be able to do it. Now, we can say we can, nothing's impossible, get that, you know? But if you don't take care of what you have, we're gonna be over there having a wonderful event with no air conditioner. How do we know that? Today, is a good example, you know? Now, that's not happening on somebody else's watch anymore, it's happening on yours. And you go, unacceptable, unacceptable. So give them the ability to solve the problems.
Right.
Well, I'm serious, you know, and to say, all right...
We've been dealing with it for some time, so, I mean...
But that's what I call project management, too, and that happens at all kinds of levels. Everybody gets to lead depending on which level you're at, and you can lead at any level. But time's up. And are we gonna miss something? Agreed, right? Are we gonna grab a whole bunch more? Yes. And we just need some participation here. If that works there, great. What else? What else? We have to take that into consideration. And you have to look at the whole team. I think we've done a decent job of putting some warm bodies in the ground. We'll have some more by next year, and we'll have a DMO hopefully that has, I think I need at least 50 volunteers.
You've got till September.
It's a running jam. It's a running check, but I don't think I'm gonna be wrong, okay? Um, 50, give me 75, so, that's a nice difference. No, I don't, I don't count.
Yeah, okay.
Anyway.
Uh-uh, you, you don't get to do it.
I'm doing it, I'm doing it.
Well, but I guess.
We tend to lock back in the best way, yeah?
Do you have the lights on? We got a light switch in there yet?
Not yet. Uh, vacation with holidays and everything, a lot of the contractors shut down, but it's on my list. I'm moving and switching as possible.
But we already proved the who's doing it, right?
So who's doing it?
We, we did that $3,000 or something, that's.
What's the, what was the problem?
Putting no lights.
Putting lights in the north side.
What, what was the issue over there with the, with the, with the DMO? What was their problem?
What was the issue?
Oh, you're talking about the, the HVAC bill, is that what you're talking about?
Question number three on the unit number three.
No, we were getting, uh, with everything off, it was the HVAC.
Yeah, that's what it's gonna end up being, is that, I mean, it's time to solve it and not just keep, you know?
Yeah, so that was, that, that's the problem, the culprit.
Culprit, all right. Um, it was 10 o'clock?
Yes.
Any discussions adding to that, Ms. Tran?
No, nobody has any discussions.
I had no discussion.
Ms. Tran?
No.
No.
Yeah.
She's good.
Did you say yes?
I think she was saying she's good, she's good.
Oh, you.